Welcome to the last board meeting of the unofficial end of summer. Can you believe it's the end of summer? Can I have a motion to reopen the public board meeting? Moved by Commissioner Frank. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. Vote passes, 7-8-0. No opposed. I would like to now turn to Commissioner Chinia and ask her to lead us in a moment of silence.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, I'd like to take time to recognize the passing of one of our city school students, as well as a city school former employee. Marquise Jackson was an 11th grade student at Excel Academy at Francis M. Wood. He was fun-loving and a well-liked student. Marquise will be greatly missed by his family, school community, and friends. Joan Harris began her career with Baltimore City Public Schools in 1966 as a school social worker, and she provided a range of clinical social work services to students that exhibited social, emotional, learning, and behavioral problems and concerns which affected school adjustment. From November 1977 to March 1992, Joan was an educational specialist in the Baltimore City Public Schools. As such, she assumed primary responsibility under the coordinator in the Office of Pupil Services for the policy, program planning, and development, management, and supervision of the school social work services. She retired in 1992. Please join us for a moment of silence as we remember these two members of our school community.
Thanks, Commissioner Chinia. I'd like to have a motion to approve the prior open session meeting minutes. Seriously? Moved by Commissioner Chinia. Moved by Commissioner Chinia, do I have a second? Commissioner Richardson, thank you, all in favor. Motion passes, 8-0. No opposed. Can I have a motion to approve the prior closed session meeting summary? Moved by Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Chinia, all in favor. Motion passes, 7-0. Thank you very much. We'd now like to have some reports from our committee chairs for open and public committee meetings that have taken place over the last couple of weeks. I'm going to start with Commissioner Bondima, who chairs the Operations Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner. I just want to make a couple of statements. We received a report from the Director of Human Capital that they are continuing to do the search or doing the search for the 21st Century School Director, Executive Director, and that's in progress. And at that last week, at that point, they had at least 20 applicants for the position, so they are moving forward with that position. Also, the building, information about the building and the heating system at the school, I was really happy to say that everything is moving along very well. A wonderful report on activity that's going on to check all the schools for the maintenance for a heating system, and so that's going real well. And if you've looked at the report on the, at our meeting, you will see that they are really addressing that issue, so I'm happy about that. And most importantly, I was really happy that at one of the board meetings in April, and I think it was April or the spring, we talked a lot about having the opportunity for the Operations Department to, to be able to have the principals or leadership at the school or at North Avenue to be able to list work orders and be able to look at the work orders online and see the progress and where it's at. And at this point, they have started that process, and they will continue to give us a report of how that's going. And I was really happy about that because we requested them to do it, and they did it. And they're continuing to work on that, that process. And that's about it. And our next board meeting will be, operations meeting will be September the 18th, 10:00 to 11:30 in this room.
Thanks, Commissioner Bondima. Next, I'd like to turn to Commissioner Hassan for the Policy Committee update.
Sure, thank you so much. The Board Policy Meeting Committee met on August 21st, where we discussed Policy BBB, which is Board Membership for the Public's Well-Being. That policy was not a new policy or new information, but is a transition from the board rule. As you maybe remember, much of the work of the Policy Committee, as we are the inaugural Policy Committee, is transitioning board rules into formalized policies. So there are no specific changes. One request that was made by the committee, because the, we now have a sole appointment process through the Mayor's Office, that they be looped in just to be sure that they're aware that this policy is being converted and make sure that they're, you know, just general awareness of what's going on. We also discussed Policy FKA, which is the Public Use of School Facilities. And Madam Chair, if possible, one of the requests from staff was that we have an internal discussion as a board about furthering, digging down into what the use of public facilities and spaces should be, given we have the community spaces in 21st Century Schools, and how are we going to make sure that communities actually engaging and using, as well as things like our athletic fields? What happens if we have people who have used an athletic field for a number of years and have invested capital into improvements and maintenance? So at some point, the request was that we have a deeper conversation on that.
So what I'd like to say in response to that is if you could touch base with the Board Exec and our Chief Legal Counsel, because we may be able to have an internal discussion, but there are very few things that we can have internal discussions about.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, this is not a violation of open meetings. It's a someplace here.
That's what I'm saying, that we may decide that it's of significant interest that we may want to schedule another board forum. But if you could, if you could work with Christian and Tammy, just to make sure we're cool, then if we pass all the open meeting laws, then yes, but let's also flag it. If it's a big enough of an interest, then we should consider time on a board agenda or a public forum.
A public forum, perfect, thank you. The other policy that we reviewed in large mass was have KGF, which is product endorsement. And just to clarify that language, it is not actually us endorsing products, or it is about using Baltimore City Public Schools logo on other products, or having elected people during a campaign announcing in our spaces and things like that, rather than product endorsement, like us having our buses say Pepsi on them or something like that. This policy is all in relationship to how Baltimore City is used as a brand to support other, other products and services and individuals. And then the last piece, we're very happy to hear, an update on Policy JJICRA, which is the Eligibility for Athletics and Interscholastic Athletic Activities. As many of you know or may recall, we adopted this policy last year to increase the minimum GPA requirement to 2.0 for our student athletes, to make sure that they are, in fact, student athletes. And what we realized, that some of the regulations needed to be tweaked a little bit, as policy is a living document, to make sure that the students who were eligible, as well as the students whose grades weren't going to be posted until October or November, weren't held back from their participation and engagement fully in schools. So we have, we are now able to field full teams. We are working towards increasing GPA, and as I suspected, when I first pushed for us not to sort of roll this in over time, some beautiful things are happening around student-athlete academic support through tutoring, through remediation, through acceleration in some cases, as well as creating a culture of, we have student athletes in this district, so that they're prepared to go on either to their NCAA careers as athletes, or to, into careers or other educational opportunities. So excited about all of those pieces, collecting great data because of this policy. So thank you to Ms. Byrd and the others in the Athletic Office for that work. And our next meeting will be September 18th, from 3:30 to 5:30, back in this space, where we will talk about Policies ILA, which is Test Integrity, and EBCD, which is the Delayed Openings, Emergency Closing of School Policy. So encourage people who have an interest or a vested, in the vested outcome of that to join us. Thank you.
Terrific. I'd now like to turn to Commissioner Chinia for the report from the Teaching and Learning Committee.
Good evening. The Teaching and Learning Committee met on August the 8th, excuse me, August the 7th, and we too discussed the policy that was just mentioned around eligibility for student athletes. We concur with the work that is being done to help our students who possibly would have been on probation to be able to play in the fall. And so we did have a good discussion about that. We also had some discussions around the preparation for the academic year, and there was a review of work that was done over the summer, both in terms of preparation for classroom teachers, preparation for our leadership, and other things that needed to happen for us to be ready, especially with the new English Language Arts Curriculum that will be implemented, K through 8. And then we had a discussion around the assessment schedule, and this was taking a look at the, any particular changes around the administration of assessments for this year. There are some changes. I would encourage you to take, to look on board docs, because those, the report is written out there. However, the biggest probably change that most people will notice is in the administration of the I Ready, which was administered three times during the year, and the recommendation for this year is that we will use Window 1 as fully recommended. There are some options if schools want to use the others, and that's usually that first one for the beginning of the year, to give a diagnostic look, to know where to begin instruction. And then there are a few changes in other areas. The overall look is decreasing somewhat the time for sitting for assessments. But I do want to remind everyone that assessment is an important part of instruction, because without seeing where our students are, we can't plan as to where we need to go for them. The next meeting, I do want to announce that our committee has a new chair, Commissioner Muriel Berkeley will be chair in our next meeting, which will be held on September the 4th. That's not right. September the, yes, first day of school, the 4th, at 3:30. It is first day of school, yes. At 3:30 in this room, so you can drop your children off to school or whatever, and help out there and get things started, and come down and be with us at 3:30 here. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of, a couple of things to comment on. One, you may have seen it in the newspaper, you may have been there yourself, you may have seen it on Facebook, but if you didn't know, last week, between the April 20th and April 24th, we opened five new schools. Think about what you go through in your own house when you get your kitchen remodeled, like, and multiply that by a million, and then you come, you're approximating the logistics around what happened last week. So I just want to give a couple of shout-outs. 21st Century School staff, you have no idea how much work went into that. Not just the engagement, but all the construction and estimators and all the names of titles, I don't even remember. They're like, working a lot. And that's just these five. We've already broken ground on five more, we've already opened four other ones, so they're coming. The MSA, our Partners of the State, as I said at one of the openings, it's not necessarily a natural act to have people that build stadiums to hang out with people who run schools, so it's been a lot of work, and everybody has stayed at it, and you know, they're, they're doing a good job. And I think everybody's kind of, you know, it's important that you stay with it when you're working with new partners. And thanks to Sheri and her team, and to Mignon, a prior leader who got us all started. No, none of this could be done, I think, without the parents and community partners and all the people who have been engaging and show up for these openings. The kids are great, I mean, the great, they're so, they're so excited. The politicians are so proud and happy. It's really a moment to savor when people come together to celebrate. So thanks to everybody who had something to do with the buildings that have already opened and to the ones that are going to open. I'm thrilled to say, though, that now we can focus on what's going to happen inside of the schools, which, let's remember, the schools, the physical plant in this city for the school buildings is kind of a mess, which is why we're doing this. Nobody can debate it, but what happens in the schools, that's like, that's like the deal, and now we're going to shift our attention. You've got to celebrate the new buildings, but if you stop there, you're missing the point. And you know, I want to also say, good luck on the first day of school. It's like next Tuesday, all the anticipation. I want to give a special shout-out to the Mayor's Office. I don't, there's nobody here from the Mayor's Office. If you see the mayor, thank her. Between the backpack handout, the block parties, the free college, the, it matters that the leader of the city constantly hammers away at how important it is to support our kids. It just matters. We know that's what we're supposed to do, and we do it all the time, but it really matters that the big cheese says that it matters. So if you see her, thank her. There's something in the paper every single day about something else the Mayor's Office has hosted, talked about, shouted about, and we appreciate it. And same thing as the 21st Century Schools. All the parents, all the staff, if you look at the operations agenda, Operations Committee agenda from last week, or two weeks ago, there's a presentation in there from the School Systems Operations Team of all the things that they do to get the buildings ready, from the cutting of the grass, to abating of the rodents, to the this, to the that, to the other. It is a ton, and they've upgraded those processes. We learned a lot last January, right? And so a lot of the processes have been upgraded, and it's reflected. Take a look at that presentation. It's very in-depth and very enlightening, so I would encourage you to do that. But thanks to Dr. Santalisis and her team, but mostly thanks to all the parents and everything you're doing to get your kids ready for school. If you live in a neighborhood where there's a school, which that would be all of you, you know, show up on opening day, greet the kids, greet the parents, just show up, be part of it. It is a very exciting, optimistic moment in our town, and if you're not a part of it, you kind of miss it. So even if you don't have a child, Kim Dreward, she didn't have any kid in the school, I'll bet you she'll be there, you'll be there someplace, won't you? Absolutely. Shaking hands, helping a little kid find a classroom, telling a parent about some important meeting, she'll be there. We can all do that. So now, so, happy end of the summer, but it's the, it's also a very optimistic time of the year, because we all get that chance to start fresh. So I'm going to do something now that we haven't been doing on a regular basis, but we are going to do on a more regular basis, and that is to give a special recognition to the people who have served this district for years, and I mean years, 30 and more. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to read the list of retirees, of people who have served this system and are now retiring, who have been, and I'll say how many years of service. After I call their name, all of them that are here, we'd like you to come up to the front, we have certificates, and we're going to take a group photograph of all the retirees, Dr. Santalisis, and the full Board of Commissioners. This deserves, we celebrate our kids all the time, and we should, but let's be serious. People who devote 30 years or more to the service of our kids, they deserve that same level of recognition. So I'm going to read the names and the years of service, and then everybody who's here will call them up. Teresa Cooper, 30 years. Anita, that's right, as your name is called, if you're here, come on up. Anita Fleet, 31 years. Michelle Baldwin, 31 years. Lorraine Lancaster, 31 years. Deborah Johnson, 31 years. Betty Louise Howes, 32 years. Dorothy Clark Ward, 33 years. Fay Batty, 33 years. Bernadette Brooks, 34 years. Barbara Rizby, 34 years. Linda Williams, 37 years. Denise Cooper, 38 years. Norma Para, 38 years. Janice Banks, 41 years. Bernadette Clemmons, 42 years. Ava Perrin, 43 years. Marion Turner, 44 years. How high can you go? Portia Landon, 44 years. Deborah Clay, 44 years. Triva Young, 44 years. Beatrice Holmes, 45 years. Marjorie Swain, 46 years. And seriously, last but not least, Sandra Meekins, 47 years. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, you are looking at five, over 500 years of collective experience and service to the kids in this city. Let's give them another hand, and let's get a picture. Patricia Keller?
Yeah.
All right, just keep this going. Patricia Keller, 39 years. Rita Martin, 30 years. See, there's.
Deborah Clay.
Deborah Clay, 43 years. Okay, so we're not perfect on the list, but you get the idea. If there's anybody, have I missed anybody else? I see you, Dr. Johnson, I see you, loving this, I see you. 49 years?
I'm not on there.
Oh, no, I don't want no certificate, I'm fine. Commissioner Anita Fleet? Michelle Baldwin? Michelle Baldwin? Lorraine Lancaster?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Norma Para? I know Norma, where's Norma?
Where's Ms. Para?
Norma?
Ms. Para?
Do we have two?
Sorry, thank you.
Cynthia Washington? You can call her up.
No, I'm waiting for you.
Janice Banks? Janice Banks? Bernadette Clemmons? Bernadette Clemmons? Ava Perrin?
Congratulations, Ms. Perrin.
If I don't call your name, please tell Christian, and we'll get a certificate, since we clearly missed.
I'll be all the secrets.
Marion Turner?
Here.
Congratulations, Ms. Perrin.
Portia Landon?
Thank you for your service, Ms. Landon.
Thank you.
Deborah Clay?
May I shake your hand?
See, we did, it just wasn't on the typed-up list. Triva Young?
Congratulations, Ms. Young, thank you so much for your service.
Beatrice Holmes? Marjorie Swain? Thank you, Ms. Swain.
Congratulations, thank you for your service, Ms. Swain.
May I shake your hand, Ms. Swain?
Sandra Meekins, I know she's here.
She's right here. Congratulations, Ms. Meekins, thank you for your service.
Deborah Johnson?
Congratulations, Ms. Johnson, thank you for your service.
Teresa Cooper? Ms. Cooper, Teresa Cooper? Betty Louise Howes?
Congratulations, Ms. Howes, thank you for your service.
Deborah Ward? Didn't say Dorothy Ward, let me see.
Ma'am, this is Ms. Cooper behind us.
And I believe I have yours right here, Ms. Cooper? Yes. Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Fay Batty? Bernadette Brooks?
Congratulations, and thank you for your service, Ms. Brooks.
Barbara Rizby?
Congratulations, and thank you, Ms. Rizby, for your service.
Linda Williams?
Congratulations, Ms. Williams, thank you for your service.
Denise Cooper. Thanks again for all that you do for our kids. Yeah, what an amazing cast of people. Christian, Christian, do you, you got Rita's name? Okay, we're going to turn our attention back to the agenda. I'm now going to, I'm, I'm, well, it's exciting, I mean, it's, that's what happens when you wait a whole year to thank people.
Well, come on.
Call a spade a spade. All right, so I'm going to ask for a motion. Okay, we're going to, yeah, we're going to pause for a minute. So before I ask for a motion on the PEP agenda, we're gonna pull John David Merrill and vote on that separately. So can I have a motion to approve the PEP agenda with the exception of John David Merrill? Moved by Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Bondima. All in favor? Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Chinia, Kashani, Frank, Richardson. Motion passes 7-0. No opposed, no abstentions. Motion to approve the appointment of John David Merrill. Moved by Commissioner Chinia. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner McFadden. All in favor? Commissioner McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Chinia, Kashani. All opposed? Any abstentions? Abstentions from Commissioner Frank and Commissioners Richardson. Motion passes 5-0 with two abstentions. I'm sorry? We'll get there. It'll be announced when we have the... Yeah, sorry, it was my oversight and not saying more. Motion to approve the appeals and hearings that came before the board? Do I have a motion? Commissioner Hassan, do I have a second? Commissioner Bondima, all in favor? Commissioners McFadden, Hassan, Bondima, Chinia, Kashani, Frank, Richardson. Motion passes 7-0. No dissensions and no abstentions. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to the CEO for her comments, including a clarification of some of the appointments.
Great, thank you very much, Board Chair Kashani. I'd like to invite Chief Grant Skinner to come before us for this evening's PEP agenda.
Good afternoon, board members and Dr. Santalisis. First, Danai Bhushrad, currently Educational Specialist II, IEP Development and Implementation, is appointed Director of Inclusion effective August 29th. Katia Stokes is appointed Coordinator of Social Emotional Learning effective September Kevin Garner, currently Science Teacher Specialist in Anarundel County Public Schools, is appointed Coordinator of STEM Science effective September 10th. Stanley Wolf is appointed Interim Director of Career Readiness from September 1st through February 15th, 2019. Dana Collins, currently Teacher at Baltimore Leadership School for Young Women, is appointed Assistant Principal at Baltimore Leadership School for Young Women effective August 29th. John David Merrill, formerly Special Assistant at Baltimore City Public Schools, is appointed Assistant Principal at Elmer A. Henderson, Johns Hopkins Partnership School. Leslie Diaz, currently Assistant Principal, not as an employee at the Lois T. Murray Elementary Middle School, is appointed Assistant Principal at Lois T. Murray Elementary Middle School effective August 29th. Rashida Ford, teacher at Baltimore Leadership School for Young Women, is also appointed Assistant Principal at Baltimore Leadership School for Young Women. Rhonda Humphries, Assistant Principal from District of Columbia Public Schools, is appointed Assistant Principal at Kip Harmony effective August 29th. Rodney Carter, currently Dean of Students at DC Public Schools, is appointed Assistant Principal at Mergenthaller Vocational Technical High School effective August 29th. Tania Moore, currently Academy Director at Baltimore Collegiate School for Boys, is appointed Principal at Baltimore Leadership School for Young Women effective August 29th. To be clear, that is a co-principal role at that school. Theodore Spain, currently Special Education Teacher at George W. F. McMecon Middle High, is appointed Assistant Principal at William S. Bear School effective August 29th. Paul Larkum, currently Resident Principal, is appointed Educational Specialist II, Literacy Professional Development effective August 29th. Malika Davis Wells, currently Student Support Liaison, is appointed Educational Specialist II Strategic Climate effective August 29th. Laura Huffman, currently Educational Specialist II, IEP Development and Implementation, is appointed Special Education Liaison effective August 29th. Sandra Edmonds, currently Instructional Lead Teacher with Prince George's County Public Schools, is appointed Assistant Principal at NACA Freedom and Democracy Academy II effective August 29th. And then there are three reassignments. Marie Parfait-Davis, who was also previously a principal, is reassigned as Principal of Banneker Blake Academy effective August 29th. Etta Johnson is reassigned as Assistant Principal at the Stadium School effective August 29th. And Mark Collins is reassigned Assistant Principal at Coppin Academy effective August 29th. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Grant Skinner, and thank you and congratulations to all of our new appointees. As has become our practice, I would like to read a couple of sentences about each of our new principal appointments this evening. So Tania Moore, who I believe is here, because I saw her stand up. There you go. You had your own cheering section. We know that Principal Moore previously served as the Academy Director for Baltimore Collegiate School for Boys. As Academy Director, she worked to ensure the academic success for boys in grades four through five. Prior to Baltimore Collegiate, Ms. Moore spent most of her career teaching middle-grade mathematics in Baltimore City schools. She holds a bachelor's degree from UMBC and a master's degree from Johns Hopkins University. We welcome Ms. Moore to her new role as co-principal at Baltimore Leadership School for Young Women. And then, although she is not with us tonight, I would like to also acknowledge that Marie Parfait-Davis previously served as Principal at Empowerment Academy and Roguel Heights Elementary Middle School. Prior to serving as principal, she was a high school English teacher. Ms. Parfait-Davis has a strong belief in teacher development, and she has served as an adjunct faculty member at Baltimore City Community College and Sojourner Douglas College. She holds a bachelor's degree from Florida A&amp;M University and a master's degree from Johns Hopkins University. We welcome Ms. Parfait-Davis to her new role as Principal at Banneker Blake Academy. Very good. And now, I would like to begin, and again, I will just thank the board for their recognition that really is a practice that we should have begun a long time ago, but the recognition of our employees with 30 years or more service, as well as Commissioner Chinia's official opening of the school... I'm sorry, Commissioner Kashani.
We look so much alike.
I know. You have Chinia, you have Kashani. That's what happens. I'm sorry. I will say that since taking this job, the lack of sleep has definitely left holes in my short-term memory.
You start confusing me with her, that's a problem.
That is a problem. But I want to thank you for opening and welcoming us to the new school year. As we prepare for this coming school year, I really am excited to be able to celebrate the more than 600 model teachers currently serving our students and school communities. We know, I know, we all know, that when staff members have opportunities to grow as professionals and leaders, they really do create high-performing learning communities that promote equity and excellence for all students. It is part of why our blueprint for student success has as one of our three pillars, leadership. And together with the Baltimore Teachers Union, we really have, since November 2010, really within our contract reflected the importance of acknowledging exemplary educators in our schools and of really creating structures to enable our educators to increase their leadership within their roles. Now, this includes educators who provide students real exposure to college and career opportunities, like our model school counselors; those who build strong relationships that make students feel safe and secure, like our model school social workers; those that create academic experiences that connect with student experiences, like core content teachers; and then those who ensure our district can provide high-quality and varied programs, like our Model CTE and vocational teachers. And then finally, those that lead enriching activities that expand young people beyond just traditional reading, writing, computing curriculum, to include the infusion of arts, like our model art teachers. Tonight, it is my pleasure to acknowledge two of our model educators who have consistently exemplified the characteristics we look for in all of our model educators. I'd like to ask Dr. Loretta Johnson and anyone else she'd like to bring up from the Baltimore Teachers Union to join me in congratulating these two educators on behalf of the Baltimore Teachers Union and city schools.
Good evening. It was wonderful to be here and see the awards for the retirees. Had I got my reward, I would have had 50 years. But I'm here today in place of Ms. English to introduce two of our model teachers. I was a part of the negotiating team to set up a career path, so it's wonderful now to see 10 years later, or eight years later, that what we put in our contract is beginning to have a career pathway for teachers to not only teach and stay in the classroom, but to get the administration and get the kind of reward that they do in working with children. So I will start with Regina O'Neil. Is a teacher of the Baltimore Polytechnic Institute, has been with the city schools and polies since 2007, has served as the World Language Department Chair, teacher of AP Spanish Language and Cultural, as well as Spanish Level 2 and 3 honors. She also is an advisor to two clubs, the L-Club de Cultural Hispanic, which is more than just the Spanish club, it's more like a student-led organization for Hispanic students that focus on issues related to the Hispanic community. She also chairs the La Scaldad Honorary Hispanica, which is a Spanish National Honor Society. Since Mrs. O'Neil has become a model teacher, she's also served as a professional peer review committee for our model teachers. Ms. O'Neil, is she here? And our second... Yes, join me. Our second teacher is Sharina Bonapart-Latoria. She is a chemistry teacher at Digical Harbor High School, is currently working with the 10th, 11th graders, and has been a city school for 19 years. And since becoming a model teacher, she also serves on our professional peer review committee. And both of these teachers were chosen because they are exemplary educators, and they embodied the characteristics of a model teacher.
Would you all like to have some words or say anything?
I am entering my 20th year in serving students in Baltimore City. I am very excited, as always, about the beginning of the school year. I'm pumped. I was in my classroom today getting all ready for the students, and I'm just looking forward to another wonderful year.
I feel the same way. Thank you so much for this opportunity to work with Baltimore students. This is my passion, and I am happy to give everything I have to the betterment of the community. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing these two teachers to come in. It's 100 of them out there, more so, as the CEO says. We have highly qualified teachers in Baltimore City. Thank you.
Absolutely. And with Dr. Johnson, before you go back to your seat, before you go back to your seat, before you go back to your seat.
She's running back to her school.
Thank you.
And as Dr. Johnson reminded us, we have many more model teachers in the district, and so it will be wonderful to be able to continue to honor them throughout this year and moving forward. And it's apropos because really, teachers and what happens in the classroom are really central to our role, our function, our charge as city schools. And earlier today, MSDE released the PARC scores for city schools and districts across Maryland, and I really am pleased to report that our students made progress overall. And with 68 schools showing increases from the prior year in the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations in English Language Arts and Math, 44 schools saw increases of more than five percentage points in either English Language Arts or Math, and 16 schools saw gains of 10 or more points in one or both subjects. This is up. This is a larger number than we have had since the administration of PARC. It is really due to, which is why I said it was apropos that this followed, the acknowledgement of model teachers. It really is the work of the folks in schools, of teachers, of school leaders. One of the things that I am most proud of is the fact that the schools that experience significant gains really represent our entire city. So we had schools in those categories that represent both charter and traditional schools. We have schools, as you will see when Chief Jones comes with her team to present, many of you are familiar with the Community Conditions Index that we use here within city schools to chart investments and our work throughout the city. And one of the things that really we should be so proud of as a city and as city schools is that these exemplary schools, these schools that are fast-improving, rapid-improving, are represented in every section of this city. And what that means is that we have examples of excellence, pockets of promise in every neighborhood, in every section of the city. We have examples internal to our city of what it looks like to make significant progress for all young people in city schools. So I want to congratulate, please. I want to congratulate those school leaders, their teams, our teachers, our parents, our counselors, and really emphasize also that with this progress, we know that we still have a long way to go. And I think I was quoted as saying, you know, we're not holding a parade necessarily right now, but I... And we do know we have a long way to go, but I will say the energy around colleagues learning from one another, we saw it, I saw it at our CEO Institute. We had principals who were presenting with teacher leaders from their schools about how the work was getting done. Folks weren't necessarily there to hear from me. They were there to hear from one another about the lift. And I think what this signals for us is that, yes, we have a long way to go, but that we have the momentum, we have the direction, we have the possibility... have the momentum, we have the direction, we have, we have the possibility now and the hope that we really can put in play what is necessary to make sure that every child in this city has high-quality learning experiences and that Baltimore City young people are just as capable, have just as much potential, can achieve at high levels like other young people across this state. So I want to thank the entire City Schools team. We are not done yet. They know we're not done yet. We have a long way to go. I want to thank the board for their leadership. It is, it is not, it is not minor to have a board that understands the need for us to work together to, yes, push and pull on one another, but know that the direction is the same, partnership with BTU, with our other collective bargaining units, folks who understand that this takes all of us. So we're not there yet. We're not going to purport that we are, but when we have momentum, we are also going to say that. And I will just add that the blueprint represents really what the core of this work is. The blueprint represents those steps that we are taking to make sure that this, this improvement leads to the kind of acceleration that we know we need to see. So I just want to say, thank you very much. We're going to keep a sense of balance to this, but given how often Baltimore City does not get recognized for the pockets of promise we have, it is wonderful to be able to celebrate those schools and school communities who, despite what some of the narratives, the lob, the lobs that are made towards our kids, our communities, I said at the CEO Institute, I believe it, that it takes special people to serve in Baltimore City Public Schools. This is not made for everyone. You have to be able to see the potential in our young people, and as much as people might think, this is actually one of the places that proves whether or not you've got the chops to really teach. Because to teach here means you are looking past what the physical present of a student might look like, and you are looking past that to see the brilliance that is there. So I want to thank our team. I want to thank City Schools. Again, we have lots of work to do. Principals know that. I've had that discussion that this is good, but we've still got work to do, so I don't want anybody sitting on a lounge chair. But we will take time to celebrate and to acknowledge. So thank you again. The, and right now, what I will do, I was going to continue, what I will do now is invite Chief Teresa Jones and her team to quickly run through with a little bit more detail some of what our cuts and analysis of this year's Park results are showing. Thank you, Chief Jones.
Thank you, Dr. Santalisis. Again, I'm Teresa Jones. I serve as our Chief Achievement and Accountability Officer here at City Schools.
And I'm Dr. Christopher Wan. I'm the interim Director of Research.
As Dr. Santalisis indicated, our results do demonstrate strong progress, but they also indicate that there is more work to be done. First, we're going to start with a bit of an overview around how our district performed by grade level on the ELA and math park assessments in comparison to the state of Maryland as well as versus year ago. And so one of the things that you will notice here in the way that this table is organized is that we have highlighted in green those years where we actually see increases versus the prior year, and in red where there are decreases. You might not see it at first glance, but good news here is that across our elementary and middle school grades, we actually have increases in every single park assessment for ELA and math. This is the first time that we've had that experience as a district. Again, we still know that there's work to be done, but we are certainly moving in the right direction. You'll also notice by comparison that there are some areas where the state of Maryland has actually experienced decreases. In the subject of ELA, you'll notice that that is in the third grade where there was a decrease from 39.8% to 38.8% proficiency. And then as it relates to math, there were three grade levels where they showed decreases, grades three, six, and eight. Now, looking at high school, let me just give a little bit of context, because this is the first year where our students actually had to meet a proficiency score in order to be able to meet the graduation requirements. And so while it's not the proficiency level of level four and five, it's actually equivalent to a level three. It does create the scenario where we're starting to see for the first time, students that are taking the park assessment a second time in order to meet those requirements. And so those two grades are the Algebra I and the ELA 10 assessment. You'll notice that both for city schools and for the state of Maryland, that there are decreases versus the prior year. And the retesters is one of the key reasons that we see those decreases in those two subjects. So what we've done here as we present the City Schools data is you'll see in the first two columns, the 2017 versus 2018 numbers. So for Algebra I, Algebra II, and ELA 10, we had decreases versus the prior year. But if you look slightly to the right, you'll see that we have now disaggregated those data points to look at the first-time test takers versus the retesters. So one way to think about that 2018 first-time testers column is in comparison to last year, because last year, every student that took it was a first-time test taker. So if we did not have students retaking this assessment, we would have actually been up in Algebra I and ELA 10 in addition to ELA 11. So again, those are additional signs of progress that are showcased across both the elementary-middle grades that we just reviewed and now the high school grades. The other note here about the retesters is you'll notice that there are very low proficiency rates there. Again, it is an indication that there's work that needs to be done, but that's a story that we're experiencing across the state. So you'll also note, again, for Algebra I and ELA 10, that there are notable decreases across the state's results, and that is something that they are continuing to look into as well. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Wan. We're going to talk a little bit about what have we noted in terms of school-level performance, in terms of growth. And then we're going to note here that there are two ways that we're going to showcase growth this evening. One, taking a look at the percent proficient and how have we changed versus the prior year. And then also looking at a measure we call the student, excuse me, the student growth percentile, which gives us a different view of growth.
Thanks. So this slide is a follow-up to Dr. Santalisis's comments. Our district growth overall is a reflection of the growth of our schools. And to highlight that, we have called out schools on this slide who have achieved levels of growth that we consider very high, and that's five or more percentage proficiency points from the previous year. So in 2016-17, we had 28 schools that had achieved this level of growth from the previous year in ELA. That is up to 33 in this most recent year. In math, in 2016-17, we had 18 schools achieve that. We are now up to 23. The cool thing about, not only are the number of schools increasing, but where the growth is happening is very diverse. So if you take a look, look at the map on the right, we've plotted these schools. We have purple dots for those achieving that in English Language Arts this year, blue dots for math, and green dots for the schools who were able, and there are 12 of them, that achieved this in both subjects simultaneously. And that map shows a very even distribution all across the city of Baltimore. So there's almost not really a region that's left untouched by one of these very, you know, high-achieving schools. On the next slide, another way we often measure growth on standardized assessments is through a median student growth percentile. And this is a growth measure that the state has been providing us both this year and last year. So we have schools that have achieved very high levels of growth as judged by a student growth percentile. And some quick background on a student growth percentile is it's a number between 0 and 100, where the higher the number is, the higher the level of growth. An average level of growth is an SGP of 50. So what we're looking at here is a list of schools, and it's a combined list of our elementary and middle schools that have achieved what we consider very high levels of growth via an SGP. And these schools have achieved 70 or higher, and there are several schools on there. And we have two, Thomas Johnson and Lakeland, that achieved this level of growth, not in just one of their grade bands, but being elementary-middle schools in both their three-to-five and six-to-eight grade bands on ELA. Again, if we take a look at the map on the right, we can see another diverse set of schools. We have several schools in areas that are shaded red. Those are representing communities with low economic investment as judged by our Community Conditions Index. So again, a diverse picture of growth on ELA there. And again, this corresponding slide shows schools with high levels of growth on the math park assessments. Again, very spread out across the city. We also have two schools that have the distinction of achieving this high level of growth in both the three-to-five and six-to-eight grade bands, and that is Hampstead Hill and Glenmount. We'll take a step back from the schools, back to the district. We have a line graph here that shows the four-year trend of proficiency of our district along with some of our neighbors. We've included Baltimore County, Prince George's County, Maryland State as a whole, and the DC public school system. In our growth, we have achieved a 1.7 percentage point increase from the previous year. Baltimore County for English and Language Arts is down about 2.6%. Prince George's County up 1.6. Maryland is about even with a small increase of .2. And then DC public schools have achieved a very high level of growth of 3.2% from the previous year. We also look at this corresponding view for our mathematics test. We see somewhat smaller gains, but more steady and smooth across the years. In this, we have achieved about one percentage growth over the previous year overall. Baltimore County is down about 1%. Prince George's County about even at a small loss of .3%. And Maryland's even, and DC public schools, again, up 3.1% from the previous year. In these last two slides, we're going to give a quick overview of some of the subgroups we usually track on our assessments. These will be followed up as part of our teaching and learning presentation. They'll be much more extensive and come later on. So again, we see that many of the traditional gaps we see in education remain. We would like to call out in particular the English learner subgroup. So if you take a look at how they were achieving in the 14-15 school year, we had on our ELA tests, a .4% proficiency. That is now up to 4%. So in terms of percent, it's gone up almost 10 times, and that is on top of a large growth in the population. So at the same time, we're providing higher quality to these students. It's also a larger quantity because the population is growing very rapidly. So these are some of our results on ELA. And then finally, in our last slide, we have the corresponding results for math of our subgroups. Again, some large gaps remain. However, across the board, many of our subgroups are showing increased performance on mathematics.
So for tonight's presentation, again, this was intended to provide a top-line view. So what you've heard today just sort of gives you not just how we perform as a district, but some of the initial highlights. Again, as Chris pointed out, we will have a teaching and learning committee conversation about the results, where we will go deeper and look at student group performance. We'll also take a look at the domain level and actually dig deeper and make connections back to the work that's going on, on the academic side of the house. So please, we do invite people to participate in that conversation. It is currently scheduled, I believe, for November the 9th. And the intent there is that we'll be able to really talk about how these results marry up with the strategies that our districts is already taking, and also what adjustments we need to make in order to accelerate the growth that you saw tonight. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Chinia?
No question. I just want to be certain that we say that date again, so everybody can put it on their calendar, November the 9th, if you'd like to be here for the more in-depth review of the Park results.
I want to thank both Teresa and Chris for their work on this and the quick turnaround given when we had the data and when we needed to go forward with it. So thank you again for your work there. Again, we do have a good amount of work before us, but we are very excited with our new, more rigorous, frankly, ELA curriculum for grades three through eight. We have, and again, I think a credit to the educators in Baltimore City. I've heard from many teachers and principals that, yeah, this is, this is going to be a lift for us and for a lot of our kids, but it's the right thing to do. And folks have been digging in over the summer. We're working to make sure that everybody has their materials. And the adoption last year of new, more rigorous math curriculum. I'm also pleased to report, which you don't see on this, we expanded through the leadership of our math department, we expanded the access in particular neighborhoods and ZIP codes for middle school students to more advanced mathematics, more specifically algebra within the middle school. And our math team did a yeoman's work in really identifying schools where there might have been a small cluster of students, say, two to four, that might not have triggered within the budget a full-time algebra teacher. But with what they developed, those young people were able to use distance learning to access that high-level content. And the overwhelming majority of young people, and again, we had, we had kids in Sandtown, we had kids in East Baltimore who I, we identified overwhelmingly, those young people passed as eighth graders the high school algebra park exam. So I think the real theme for this is that our trajectory, the way we're defining our early work around equity is making sure that all young people have access to rigorous enriching learning experiences. We're beginning to see the traction, but a lot of the heavy lift we're doing this year as we really move forward implementing the blueprint. And I'm also pleased to announce that the work of the blueprint that we've been doing, the work around really digging deeply with literacy and expanding voice for our young people and making sure that they have a command of high-level complexity around reading, writing, listening, and speaking, our work around student wholeness, and the fact that young people within city schools actually need more enriching experiences, need to experience more supports with regard to their social-emotional development. And then our third pillar, leadership, which really speaks to what I referenced earlier, and that is the number of leaders within our district, both at the classroom, school level, department level, that we really need to invest in to be able to expand this growth. And so in recognition of really that work and the core work and plan we've put together, I'm really pleased to announce that the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation today announced that Baltimore City Schools is the recipient of an $11.2 million award for the next four years. And it is in recognition of the work, frankly, that is already happening. The Gates Foundation, for those of you who have been in the education realm for a long time, know that the Gates Foundation in past years has funded particular initiatives that they identify as being crucial. There's a shift within the foundation's funding, and what they wanted to fund was existing work in school districts, building out networks of schools, ground-level expertise. I have to credit our team in partnership with our local education fund, the Fund for Educational Excellence, Roger Schulman and his team. And we really held the line, and we said, we are going to apply for money only that will fund the work we have already identified as being core. We're not jumping through hoops. We're not doing backflips. We're not going to just create new work. And I think it is significant that the Gates Foundation, we ended up out of over 530 applicants. We are one of only 19 organizations to receive an award, and we are one of only seven to receive an award of this size. And it is because they did visits, they looked at the leadership of the board, they looked at the soundness of the direction. I want to give a special shout-out to Principals Patricia Burrell at North Bend and Principal Sam Raver and his team at Calvin Rodwell Elementary Middle. And yes, if you check the lists of our fast-improving schools, you'll see both those schools are on that list. We selected them before we knew the Park results this year. And because their teachers, their principals really could talk the walk and talked very forthrightly about both the challenges and the need, we were able to really show them the real work going on in Baltimore City. I really want to give a special shout-out to Kevin Leary at the Fund and Sarah Heaton, who returned to Baltimore City Schools. Their leadership in this effort really led to this award that, again, will fund existing work here in city schools. And I want to commend them and congratulate City Schools that the work that we are carving out in the blueprint has received national recognition of this level. But I also would like to But I also would like to take time, and I think it's important for the city of Baltimore to know, that in addition to a large popular funder like the Gates Foundation that has been wonderfully supportive in this process, we also have both local foundations and other national foundations that are also recognizing the momentum of improvement that we have going on here in city schools. So I want to thank the Abel Foundation, the Baltimore Community Foundation, the Jacob and Hilda Blaustein Foundation, Annie E. Casey Foundation, which has given over a million dollars at this point locally to city schools to fund our blueprint work, Clayton Baker Trust, the Lockhart Vaughn Foundation, the Open Society Institute here in Baltimore, the Schusterman Family Foundation, which by the way is another national foundation that's recognized the work that we have put in place and is funding our blueprint, Tal Hamer Foundation, and Under Armour. This philanthropic support, combined with our ongoing and significant city schools investment, the reordering of our, of our own funding, prioritization, increased efficiencies, regardless of narratives that would say otherwise, these are national leaders who have acknowledged that this is the work that we're doing. And I think this will allow our vision for the blueprint to really take momentum to be realized in the years ahead. So again, I want to congratulate and thank the board for their leadership, as well as leaders on the ground level who are actually doing the work. You can't fudge this stuff when funders come through. They like all the pretty stuff on the pages, but they're not convinced. They're convinced when they actually get on the ground and see the work that's going on. So congratulations to all of us here in Baltimore City Schools for this level of national recognition. And then finally, back to the practicality of opening of schools. I want to just make sure that as schools reopen, we need to recognize that we really, that we will be looking, from every forecast, that both myself and Dr. Washington and others are monitoring over the next week, next weeks, that we will be looking at periods of hot weather over the next few weeks. As we all know, many of our schools do not have adequate air conditioning. We have submitted a plan that has been approved by the state for the time period to make sure that that air conditioning is, is on track. But while our goal is to open all buildings every school day, in extreme heat, a decision may be made to close these non-AC schools. And as many of you remember, in January, I promised and presented to the board like our plan for ensuring that families had timely communication around when the conditions at schools were not conducive to student learning. Those are still published on the website. I want to thank Mr. Mark ATN, who is standing in the place of Chief John Davis, who has been working with our principal supervisors, our ILEDs, to work with principals, to make sure we are all on the same page around what those dismissal processes will look like in, in case of, in cases of real inclement and extreme heat. We know that particularly, we may need to close what we are calling non-air-conditioned schools or dismiss early. The hot and humid weather, you should also know, again, so that we are communicating with transparency, is also causing some condensation leaks at some of our air-conditioned buildings with water from the hot air, condensing and dripping from the exterior of cold pipes. Now, our operations team, under the leadership of Dr. Washington, who's serving as our interim chief operating officer, are really making sure that they are getting out to those schools. An updated list of schools that lack air conditioning or may be experiencing some of these challenges is available on our website, along with the guidelines for closing. In general, what the public should keep in mind is that what will be considered is that the temperature in, when the temperature in a majority of classrooms in most buildings is 85 degrees or higher, and students cannot be relocated to cooler areas, there will be closure. And when the outside heat index reaches 100 degrees by 10:30 a.m., if either of these conditions are met, the listed non-air-conditioned schools will dismiss three hours early. This would also include air-conditioned schools if their cooling systems are not working properly and repairs cannot be made quickly. I encourage everyone to check the list of non-AC schools to see if your child's school is one of them. And again, you know, we celebrated, and I think rightly, Commissioner Koshani, the opening of our brand-new school buildings, and we now are up to nine open. We have five more we're breaking ground. But this is also a reminder that decades of under-investment are not rectified in a year or two. Decades, my grandmother had a saying, "You cannot plant a tree for 50 years and then expect to uproot it in one day." That's similarly where we are with our buildings. We're making progress. Our team is working hard to make sure that our spaces are ready. Principals are informed, but we do have a ways to go within this. And then finally, I will just say to everyone, the first day of school has been my favorite day. It rivals Christmas in my mind. Since I have been a little girl, I still get excited. I still have butterflies the night before school. I still think that school is one of the most important institutions in any community. Baltimore City is no exception. I want to say to all the citizens of Baltimore City, those who have come up to me over the summer, those who have said, "We believe in our schools. We believe in the work that we're doing. We believe in our young people." Thank you for that. Thank you for your prayers. Those of you who come up and tell me, "You know I'm praying for you every day," you don't, don't stop because this job is what it is. But I am thrilled and looking forward to another successful opening of school. And thank you all. And I'll turn it back over to Board Chair Koshani.
Before we review the consent agenda, we have one correction to make on the Teaching and Learning Committee.
Sorry, we did, we did some checking with the calendar, as I gave you a save the date and a reminder. The actual date that the Teaching and Learning Committee will be looking at the park results in depth is October 10th. October 2nd, I'll get it right.
So you've got three days now.
Okay. October 2, 3:30 in this room. If you, if you really would like to, to get more information in terms of more details about those results and, and also some of the analysis as to what we need to do to improve instruction and be certain that our students continue to, to accelerate. So thank you. October 2.
All right. What we're going to do now, before we open it up for comment, is I'm going to walk through the items in the consent agenda. Board members, please let me know if there's anything you want to pull that will give the staff a chance to, and why you want to pull, that'll give staff a chance to go find the answers to your questions, and then we'll come back. For the general public, sometimes the, now, since we've made these changes to the way the board meetings are structured, we don't pull a lot of items because all these committee meetings that we're talking about, things are discussed in depth at the committee meetings. So they, they've usually had a once-over before they get to the full board. So just so you don't think we're not paying attention. So with that, I'm going to just walk through the list and let me know if you want to pull anything. Item 8.01, waiver request for Great Kids Farm. Item 8.02, feasibility study for Robert W. Coleman Elementary School. Item 8.03, feasibility study James Mosher Elementary School. Item 8.04, the Cub Contract. 8.05, waiver request for Brem's Lane Public Charter School. You going to pull that? Can you just let us know why? Obstention, okay. So the staff, there's no, no question, just a recusal. Item 8.06, waiver request Lily Mae Carroll Jackson School. Item 8.07, FY 2009 Supplemental Appropriation for the Dr. Angela Y. Davis Leadership Academy. We are going to defer item 8.08, Arundo Elementary School renaming request to a future board meeting to allow more time for community engagement. Items on the consent agenda for the procurement. Item 9.01, Brailsford and Dunleavy.
We have one more.
Not on that, not on that agenda.
I'll go that.
I'll, I'll find it. I'll go, I mean, I.
That's the lease extension of the charter schools.
Okay, I was reading, I was reading off of the.
Yeah, I don't have.
Yeah, it's not on, it's not on the document that was printed, and it's not online.
It's in Board Docs.
Okay.
But I think too, that, Madam Chair, if we could pull that for some verbal explanation, I would like just an overview of this lease extension.
Got it. Item 6.09, lease extension for some charter schools. We've got a request to pull it for some further explanation.
8.09.
8.09, my bad. I, I didn't have that.
It's not in front of you.
It's not in front of me. It was, we, it was added late, which is why I think we want to talk about it. Everybody got it? Okay. For the, sorry about that. Procurement agenda, 9.01, Brailsford and Dunleavy, Dunleavy. 10.01, Judy Centers. 10.02, Ingenuity Project. 10.03, American Reading Company and Book Source. 10.04, Baltimore City Health Department. 10.05, the College Board. 11.01, Coastal Sun Belt. 11.02, Baltimore City Health Department. 13.01, J.F. Fisher. 13.02, Clyde McHenry. 13.03, Chilmar Corporation. 14.01, Teach for America. Those are all the items on consent. So what we're going to do, we'll take public comment. Sometimes public comment generates more questions. So after public comment, we'll ask board members if they want to pull any additional items, and, and we'll just move from there. So the only item that we pulled as of now is item, it was 8.09. And we also pulled.
8.05.
8.05, Brem's Lane. Okay? Thank you. With that, we have some groups that we invite to make sort of some regular commentary that we invite, and there's, we, we are making, just so people know, we are making some, as the year starts, some additional effort to reach out to some of these groups, to remind them that they have this opportunity. We've had, and because we're concerned that not everybody knows that, we've had some commentary from the general public about youth voice. We're also looking at that and to make sure that that, they're afforded opportunities to, to participate in the special recognition comment as well. With that, the three groups that we reached out to that would like to comment tonight are the Parent Community Advisory Board. So our first guests will be the leadership, the new leadership team of Julianne Kelly, who's the chair, Jamal Jones, who's the vice chair, and Shontae Guy is the treasurer. So welcome to comment. Is, is Julianne here? There she is. She's not. That's not Julianne.
It's been a long day. Good afternoon, everybody. So I'm Jamal Jones, Vice Chair, P-CAB. Julianne Kelly couldn't be with us today. She had another obligation. So the rest of the exec team is filling in. To my right is Shontae Guy and Carolyn Combs. And essentially, what we want to do is just kind of update you guys on one, some of the stuff that we've been doing, some of the activities that we plan on doing, and just making sure that there is a regular piece of, or set of conversation or communication going on. So just in, in, in the same vein of save the dates, we have our board retreat on September the 15th. It's going to be at Baltimore Community Mediation Center, at which point we'll be developing our committees, including engagement, teaching and learning, and policy, other committees, and other work that we'll be doing over the course of the year with other schools and working on the outreach for P-CAB. We've also kind of started working on doing Facebook posts, kind of streaming some of the stuff live. We've actually even live-posted some of the things that have occurred tonight, so just to make sure that folks have that. Other stuff include that we intend to be turning in monthly board reports, including a finance report for the, the treasury stuff, as well as a written report. That'll come shortly after that. We don't have it at this time to submit, but we will have it soon. And other stuff that we've done is just kind of hang out, right? Like, we got the whole board together. We went to Mustang Alley. We did some team building, some fellowship, and they got to know one another. And so we got some really good folks coming onboard, and in that same vein of recognition. Give me one second. And I want to recognize the new members of P-CAB. They were not voted on by the other two parties that give P-CAB members at the time. But I want to recognize from ACLU, Anyeka Anadozi and Joseph Kane, and from Disability Rights Maryland, Jessica Fauntleroy, Stephanie Bradshaw, and Kimberly Ashanti. That's all.
Don't want to add anything? Shontae?
Good evening, Madam Board Chair, other commissioners, and Dr. Santa Lisa. My name is Shontae Guy. I am serving on the executive committee this year as its treasurer. I am grateful for the opportunity to be on P-CAB, and we're all really excited about the academic year ahead of us. Just to follow on to what Jamal mentioned, it was really important to us to establish a human connection with, with each other first before starting this very powerful and meaningful work for the benefit of our children, which is why we took the opportunity to engage with each other and meet each other personally, and to learn each other's engagement styles. We know that all of us bring varying points of view and diversity of experience, diversity of age, diversity of thought to this process, and really making sure that we got to know each other well enough to know that when conflicts arise, because they will, as we kind of navigate through this, this journey this year, that we're managing expectations not only of ourselves, but of the, of the board, of the district, and of the parents, the children, and the, and the, the community that we serve. The final thing that I'll add on, and then I'll pass it to Carolyn if she has anything, is that we obviously want to meet with Dr. Hassan, given that she is the, the policy committee chair for the board, to make sure that we understand more fully and earlier in the game, if you will, what's coming down the pipe, so that we're effectively communicating out these policy changes, not only to board committee members for P-CAB, but also for the principals and for the parent-teacher organizations, so that we can get meaningful feedback back to those folks that are presenting those policy recommendations.
Jamal, you mentioned the next, you have your board retreat on the 15th. Can you let us know when the next P-CAB meeting is?
So the next public meeting is September 27th.
September 27th, at what time?
6 o'clock. Yep, 6 o'clock.
6:30.
6:30. It usually is on this list, but I wanted to be able to announce it at the end along with the other ones.
Awesome.
It's in this room, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner McFadden?
Just one quick point. Are, you all are aware of the policy committee meeting schedule? Yes, okay.
So next, our next guest is, where's my list? I think it is, but I, yeah, it is. I just want to find where I'm on my agenda here. Next list is CAC, Ms. Billups. Nice to see you, Sheila. It's been a while.
Good evening, everyone, all the attendees. My name is Sheila Billups. I'm the CAC chairperson. Just in case you don't know what CAC is, it's Special Education Citizen Advisory Committee. Our responsibility is to gather information from parents, staff, even the students, and bring it back to the board and to the director of special education. I promised you that we was going to get an executive board that was up and running, and we have it now. I'd like to give those names. Vice Chair, Edna Williams. Secretary, Janet Hamilton. And those that are not present, Correspondent Secretary, Ms. Monique Rich. Treasurer, Keisha Goodwin. And our Parliamentarian is April Baker. We're looking for a great and exciting new school year. With all the new schools that's happening, we are very excited. We plan to visit those schools and talk to the IEP chairs and to the special educator and find out their needs and how we can support them. Our first meeting of this year will be September the 10th. At that meeting, we will have the Transportation, which is usually kind of difficult for parents with children with special needs. So Transportation will be speaking with us. Mr. James Torrance will be speaking with us about attendance, policy and regulation, as well as the new policy around heroin and opiates addiction, which is very important for us to understand. And we will be having, our first presenter will be Dr. Brooks. She was giving us an overview of special education, and we'll be expecting for special education this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Billups. We look forward to hearing from you as often as you can come to Board meetings. We appreciate being kept up to date.
Thank you.
And Ms. Billups, I just want to ask you and the Executive Committee, have you reached out to my office to make sure that on the days you would like for me to come, I'm not going to, you know, burst into your meeting, but just, I just want to flag to make sure-
I've already attempted, and we're waiting to hear back from your-
Okay.
... scheduler.
Absolutely. We'll make sure that we get that on. I just wanted to check in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, good.
Please.
Good evening, Madam Board Chair. I'm Edna Long. Well, they know me as Grandma Edna. And it's going to be an honor and a privilege as a real foot community activist for 30 years of work. I'm going to personally commit myself to walk into the schools in Baltimore City as the Vice Chair, to walk into the classroom to see how our children with challenges are doing, and just to let everybody know, the first day of school, there will be 129 officer friendlies standing at the doors of the schools to greet our children. My name won't be on the list, but I have been for seven, eight years writing proposals to restate the officer friendly program. And I guess somebody read my proposal and thought he was a good justice. But there will be 129 schools, 129 officers at the doors of the school greeting our children. This is the first step of communication, and I really am going to dedicate myself because I've been 40 years working with special needs and children with learning disabilities. I wrote a proposal to you. I met you in February. I submitted a proposal for the IEP process that Monday. So I'm dedicating myself. I'm on this committee because there is extra work that needs to be done, and I'm going to work diligently to do apparent with power, to get the parents in position to lobby for our children and understand the process of lobbying, and that needs to be done.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Janet Hamilton. As you said, I've been a teacher myself for a number of years, but now I am looking forward to help with the special need kids. And it's also, I'm also working as laid on with my child school, William Bear, and also will do other work towards helping the sector at large.
Thank you, ladies, for all that you do. Thank you.
And I just want to say a special thank you to Grandma Edna, because if everyone who brought complaints and everyone who pointed out where we fall short, did what you do, which is to become involved and to help us improve, then city schools' gains would increase exponentially. So I just want to thank you for being yet another advocate who appropriately holds our feet to the fire, but who also joins in with us. So I want to thank you for that.
And I need to say one more thing. And he's holding his head down, but just to show you how hard we work at our family, Joshua Menya, you can listen to my God address.
Ladies. Thank you, ladies. That's awesome. Our last, our last guest for the special public comment is our friend from Pazza, Jimmy Giddings, President of Pazza.
I'm sorry. I don't need a mic. You can hear me. But thank you anyhow. I'm looking around the room, and I'm looking at all the new faces. It's been quite a while since I've had the opportunity and pleasure to speak to the Board of School Commissioners. So I guess we have been working in a very peaceful manner for the past year and a half, or two years, because I think it's been about that amount of time. And you know, when you see my face, there, there are concerns that I have as far as administrators in the Baltimore City Public School System. First, I would like to publicly thank Dr. Santalise, Allison Coyne, Jeremy Skinner, John Davis, and also, this is very unusual, Jerome Jones. Jerome and I fight back and forth quite a bit. But again, I want to publicly thank those individuals for working so diligently to try to secure positions for individuals who have been removed or reassigned. And that is the terminology I think the Board and Dr. Santalise like to use, "reassign." Unfortunately, I don't agree with that terminology. I call it a demotion, and many of our administrators have been demoted. And I'm in a catch-22, and I don't know if many of you are familiar with that terminology. The reason I am in a catch-22 is because I represent principals, I represent assistant principals, I represent central office staff. And I firmly believe that principals should have the right and autonomy to select who they want in their buildings. Unfortunately, it puts me at a disadvantage when individuals lose positions or are demoted because of budget cuts. And I am looking at a situation now where I have some close to 20 assistant principals and central office staff members who have been reassigned under the terminology of the Baltimore City Public School System. I don't accept that terminology. The terminology is demoted. These individuals have devoted, and it's amazing the number of individuals that were here today that you looked at who have retired from this system. These individuals have dedicated 20 and 30 years of their lives to this system, and to be treated in such a demoralizing and humiliating manner is disgusting to me. We need, this Board needs to start looking at situations where there are budget cuts and stop demoting these individuals. It's just not right. The people that sat in this audience this evening never went through that. I have young administrators who are being demoted, and it's demoralizing. We need to look at another method in which we can assist these people when there are budget cuts in the system. I've started teaching in this system in 1970. I have dedicated 48 years of my life to this system, and I am not going to sit idly back and see individuals that have put their trust and confidence in me demoralized or humiliated. I'm asking this Board, again, to look very closely at decisions that are being made for individuals who are suffering through budget cuts. I thank you for your time. As usual, it's been a pleasure, Dr. Santalise. I'd like to say one other thing. I'd like to recognize in the audience, Dr. Bonnie Wilson. Bonnie Wilson was Principal at Poly. He dedicated his life to this system. We have to start giving the respect that is due to the administrators in this system. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jimmy. We have a number of people who have signed up for public comment. Our first guest in general public comment is Rebecca Yanowen from the Teachers Democracy Project.
So I wanted to talk to you about two issues this evening on your agenda. The first is the vote on the contract with TFA. So this contract is for $880,000. If the District decided to keep this money, what couldn't we do that TFA currently does? Haven't we spent enough years outsourcing to have learned what TFA has to teach us about recruitment? Alternative certification routes should not replace a district-wide approach to professional staffing. By investing in our own infrastructure, we believe that we would be able to address some of the key reasons that teachers are leaving the District. So we've been engaged in a process with Jeremy Skinner that has been amazing so far on the understanding the decline in black teachers. And so one of the key things that has come out of those public sessions is that we are not currently supporting teachers that are just entering the system through traditional means, and moving from standard to professional is unclear to many teachers. We are also not doing a good job of helping our seasoned teachers to grow. So having pay, a pay scale is important, and, but that is not enough to meet teachers' needs around their growth and advancement. Teachers want the opportunities to grow without becoming administrators. They want the chance to stay close to the classroom, to become teacher mentors. Couldn't we take these resources and invest in what we actually need to do to support teachers, instead of allowing an outside entity to take up the slack where we feel like we're not able to achieve? We urge you to consider reducing reliance on outsourced sources like TFA and to invest in the District's ability to support these teachers. The other thing that I want to talk to you about is the Enrollment Task Force. We've read the reports and are glad that the Task Force talked to a wide range of people and feel that the analysis around the challenges that exist around enrollment are accurate. We are concerned about some of the pieces of the recommendations. One strategy is that customer, the Customer Service Report describes the creation of a four-person office that could focus on customer service. We would prefer to see a commitment to fully staffing strategies like the Community Schools Initiative, Restorative Practices, the Whole Child Initiative, things that are about improving relationships in schools already. Let's not create a separate department that replicates what we're already trying to do. The other piece in the enrollment report that we wanted to address was that this report seems to set the stage for closing more schools and consolidating programs, on the assumption that families might care more about these programs than they do, than high advancement programs, than they do about attending a school in their neighborhood. We think this is a massive assumption to make, and fear that even with the proposed community input process, neighborhoods that are currently experiencing disinvestment will lose their last anchoring public institution. Families with the least ability to provide their own transportation and with the most safety concerns will be the hardest hit. Three minutes. That was a lot.
Just one comment on the Enrollment Task Force. Thanks for those observations. We had committed, we committed to a sort of a next phase with some engagement, and when we looked at the sheer number of, in the fall alone, kind of community meetings, whether it's an enhanced budget engagement process, different forums, et cetera, et cetera, we know that we already have scheduled, the school system already has scheduled, I don't know what you call, what do you call your things? Conversations with-
Oh, the CEO conversations.
Conversations with Dr. Santalisis. I'm sorry. Your things. And so because they are, they're popular, and they're scheduled, and they're out in the communities, we are going to have a special focus in them on some discussion of the Enrollment Task Force, not issues, but recommendations, and a chance for people to engage the CEO in those recommendations with this kind of commentary. We don't necessarily disagree with you. So just because it was a recommendation in the final reports, there's a lot of work being done right now by an internal team to pour through those. What are the budget implications? What should we do? What couldn't we do? So it really matters on an ongoing basis to do what you did tonight and to come to some of the CEO conversations so that we can continue to get people's thoughts and reactions to those ideas. So greatly appreciated. And greatly appreciated to your team and your colleagues, I see Natalia's coming up next, for your help during the process as well. It really did matter.
And I just want to say thank you also for your critical questioning with regards to developing the internal capacity around teacher support. There, and I won't get into kind of a point-by-point, except to say that under Chief Grant Skinner's leadership, we actually have, for the first time this budget cycle that the Board has already approved, made investment in developing the internal capacity of city schools, because we realized that over a number of years, that investment had not been made. And because of really Jeremy's leadership, we have some of that. I think you raised critical questions, but I wanted more to flag that we too are looking at those, and we're looking with TFA at those same issues as well. So I want to acknowledge that. Thank you for kind of raising real thoughtful, critical questions around that. And this is the first year in a long time that we've actually made investment, additional investment in our internal capacity, particularly around recruiting and support of first-year teachers. So thank you.
Great. I just also want to give a shout out to Jeremy Grant Skinner. He's been incredibly inclusive and open to hearing from a wide array of very critical friends to the District. So much appreciation.
I'm hoping that this is starting to be a trend, and you should call us out when it doesn't feel like we're doing it, because the acknowledgement that everybody kind of wants the same thing means that we have to be open to working with all, everybody has to always work together. We may not always agree, but it is a better way to go than to act like some set of people have the answers and some set of people don't. That's just not true. Our next guest, also from the Teachers Democracy Project, is Natalia Bacchus.
Hi, good evening. I'm Natalia Bacchus, a public school teacher for 14 years, including five years in Baltimore City Schools with Moravia Park Elementary. And now I work with Teachers Democracy Project with Rebecca Yanowen. And this summer, we had 25 parents, parent educators, and teachers as fellows, and they did 25 one-on-ones with other parents, parent educators, and teachers in the District. And one of the things that they kept coming up was about bullying. So we wanted to give you a little bit of feedback on the bullying policy. We had an event on August 13th with Eric Banzac from Office of School Supports, and James Patton from Director of Related Services, and also with Sarah Warren, Director of Student Wholeness. And they came to inform our fellows on the District's policy on bullying and supports that are available, and also to brainstorm ideas of what do parents, pares, and teachers want to see around bullying policy. And that the bullying policy is currently being revised. So want to give you a little bit of feedback. We had some concerns with the bullying policy. First, that the emphasis is more on reporting bullying than it is on resolving the root causes of the problem. The assumption is that if bullying is reported, then it'll be resolved. If this is the case, there should be as much detail about how these investigations work and succeed as there is on reporting the problem. Second, we need to understand why people currently don't report bullying. We hear from teachers that many principals discourage reporting because then they receive pressure instead of resources from the Districts for having instances of bullying at their school. The bullying policy is understandably a policy document that must deal adequately with legal and liability issues. The policy currently does not admit the fact that in many- The policy currently does not admit the fact that in many instances, the needed supports for students and families are not available in schools. We understand that adequate resources may not exist to address all circumstances. However, in the spirit of addressing the challenge of building real equity in schools, we propose that there be a description of what configuration of positions and services could actually meet student, teacher, and parent needs. Social workers, restorative practice coordinators, community school coordinators, teacher mentors, parent liaisons, and trained office staff are all needed to address both the problem of making schools more friendly and inviting and the problems associated with bullying. We need to practice articulating in value statements exactly what our students deserve and where the gaps are, even when we can't immediately provide all of what is needed. One immediate result of taking this approach, spelling out what is, what we need to achieve equity, will be to give parents, advocates in the district, the same information needed to advocate jointly for more resources. Thank you.
Ironically, what you just said at the end is what I just whispered in her ear. Agree. No, about the resources. You're right. Thank you. Questions, comments? Our next guest, Angela Brown from Tunbridge.
Again, my name is Angela Brown, and I do have some concerns about transportation. Last year, the bus service was consistently untimely during the last school year. In April, I started keeping daily records. During the last 40 days of school, the school bus was over half an hour late 25 times. It is unacceptable for my child to be picked up late for school more than 31 times. I am requesting alternate transportation arrangements, cab service for my child for this 2018 school year. My next concern is I feel that my child's frustration in the classroom would be alleviated with more support from the school. On the last school day, last school year, I requested a one-on-one, but that did not resolve this problem. I'm requesting that both of these issues be addressed before this 2018 school year begins. I've reached out to multiple organizations to assist with resolving these issues, and I continue to be frustrated. I feel it's not giving my child a fair chance at life. The system has the ability to resolve these problems, and I'm asking the school board to help me. I'm available 24/7 to have these matters resolved.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Dr. Santalisa so she could respond.
Now, Mrs. Brown, and Ms. Brown, thank you so much for coming to present and let us know what your challenges are. What I have done and will do is I have spoken to our, our transportation head to make sure that we can look into, and we've actually already made some adjustments. We'll see whether those meet specifically your need. I'm not going to necessarily promise that it's going to be a cab service, but I do promise that we are looking and directifying based on the data that you presented, and we thank you for that. And then secondly, Deborah Brooks, who is our head of the Office of Special Education, can work with you around getting the aid support for your, for your child that you believe is needed and also working with your child's school to help make sure that we get that in place. So Dr. Brooks can meet you right at the back. And then we also can follow up, Dr. Brooks can also put you in contact with some of our folks on operations to make sure that we're working with you for real clear transportation options for this year. And you should, you should know that as you experience any challenges moving forward around that, you can certainly keep us updated so that you don't have to wait until you log 30 days late to be able to do that because both Dr. Brooks through Special Education as well as the transportation folks will, will help guide you through that until we reach a point that, that we can kind of find mutually agreeable quality transportation for your child.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last, but certainly not least, is Kim Truheart, our last guest speaker.
Three minutes is not enough. Thank you for speaking with Ms. Brown. She has been extremely frustrated. And as you know, she went as far as going to the media, and that should not be the way we resolve things in this district. You've got great people here who need to understand their role is to help these parents who have needs that go beyond the norm. And the expectation is that we can do that. Okay? So, so don't fail them. Help them. Ingenuity on the agenda tonight. Talks about expanding to two schools. Great. I just want to make sure Northwest Baltimore is included. Okay? And so when, when it comes to looking at your conditions index and things of that sort, I'd like to believe that, that Northwest Baltimore is going to benefit from this. And if I could have one at Liberty, I want it at Liberty. However, we're not a middle school.
Just a random school.
But we're going to fix that, too. School readiness. Thank you, Dr. Washington, for all that you guys have done on the physical plant. Staffing is critically important. I was at Forest Park ribbon cutting the other day, and I was so proud to be there. That is a beautiful building. And afterwards, I talked to the principal, Monica Daly, fellow Dove, and, and we talked about staffing and ensuring that we have quality, competent staff in that building to lead our children through this academic year. And I'm praying. Let's just say that. At Liberty this school year, I have been informed that we have five teaching staff members who will be lying on maternity leave. That's a lot.
Everybody relax.
That's right.
It's a natural thing in life.
It is a natural thing. And, and, and it's, you know, a result of us growing younger, bringing in younger staff members. I love the fact that we're going to have five more students added to the, right, the enrollment, but it's going to be a challenge this year for our students. Liberty Open House for Parents is this Friday from 2:00 to 3:30. You're all welcome to come. Parents will tour the facility. They'll get to take goodies home for their kids. Liberty Rec Center just benefited, and again, it's your facility, okay, under your stewardship, benefited from a grant where I had about $12,000 left over. So we have, for the last month, been buying everything. Amazon is my friend. And so we have bought new flat-screen TVs for every room in the rec center. We've got new furniture throughout the building. And so I had a wonderful time spending the $12,000. Water quality testing, I want to hear more about that and where we are and what the plan is. Duty center expansion plans, what are they? You know, the fact that we only have 11 duty centers? Every elementary school with preschool needs to have a duty center. AC and the comment Dr. Santalisa's made about when we get to 100 degrees, that's hot. And who determined that threshold as 100 degrees as the, the, the trigger for closing schools? I think that's too high. Betsy DeVos recently said that she wants to use the little 2% of federal funding that we get to buy teachers' guns. I was on the radio the other day, and I think that's the stupidest idea ever. So I'm going to do everything I can to ensure that if she does facilitate that through some change in federal policy or law, that we here locally are not going to comply with that and that we're not going to use that little bit of money that we get to buy guns for teachers. I will be going on the radio again. I've been invited to go back on the Dr. K Show this week to give some more details about my views on this issue. And I hope you all agree that we are not going to be buying guns for teachers. I want to applaud the school police for what they do. They are the security that we need. They are doing a wonderful job. All the staff is doing a good job. And I applaud you, Dr. Santalisa, that like I told you earlier, when you came back, I like you. I like you as a person. I like you as a leader. I like what you're doing. The blueprint is something that I support, and I think it is critically important that those who see a need to help us in this struggle through investments, the Gates Foundation, Roger Shulman and others, we need them. We have to augment what you're doing, help hopefully to expedite it, to get us there faster, all right? Because, because our babies need it. They need every advantage we can give them. So I am thankful. I am hopeful. But if I got to go on the warpath, I'm ready to do that as well. Have a great one.
Hold on one second. Commissioner Hassan?
So thank you very much for your comments, and I just wanted to thank you again for your, your commentary on, on Dr. K's show. I also want to use it as an opportunity to reinforce your point on the school police and, and the work that they're doing. It's one thing for Chief Hamm to be able to articulate a position and be able to send our message and say positive, great things, but Sergeant Boatwright did an amazing job on there as well of really being clear about where the district stands, about how we move forward positively in lockstep with the school police, articulating the difference between city police and the additional training that, that school police have received. So I just wanted to take this opportunity that you teed up for me to shout out to him as well as Chief Hamm for really being the kind of leader that we need as part of, as part of the blueprint in building the capacity of those that he serves. So thank you for that.
And one final comment. Dr. K asked me in questioning, what can parents do and what should parents do? And so my response was, go to the school at the beginning of the year and ask the principal to show you their emergency preparedness plan that lays out the 12 emergency events that they prepare for, fire drills, active shooter drills, whatever it is, and get comfortable with those plans. And the other point was as of, in April of last year, there were nine schools had not done, that had not done any emergency drills as of April of last school year. That can't happen this year. We need the emergency plans documented, available for the parents to review, and then executed.
For the reminder on that, I know Commissioner Cannon, before he left, he was, he was all over this and had those presentations so we could get updated on where everybody was. And it's, after we get through the initial wave of opening, we should probably just get a little update on that just so we can constantly keep people informed about what we're doing.
Yes, ma'am.
Good catch.
I just want to add that on the 100 degrees, it's 100 degrees heat index outside.
Okay.
Inside, if, if the temperature in a classroom hits above 85 degrees, that's when principals start moving kids to cooler spaces. And if they don't have cooler spaces in a majority of the classrooms, then we would dismiss that school early.
I didn't hear that.
No, no, no. I just wanted to make sure because I didn't want you to think we were keeping babies in 100-degree classrooms.
Okay, with that, I'm, I would like to ask for a motion to vote on the consent agenda items that were not pulled. That means we're going to vote on everything except item 8.05, the Brem's Lane Public Charter School waiver, and item 8.09, the extension of the three charter school leases.
Madam Chair, I would like to pull 14.01.
Oh, I forgot to ask, as a result of the conversation. So as a result of the public commentary, other items that are going to pull, we're going to pull item 14.01, Teach for America. Any other items to pull as a result of public comment? Okay, can I? Thank you. Sorry about that. Motion to approve the consent agenda without those three items. Motion from Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Frank, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan Bondima, Chinia Kashani, Frank Richardson. The consent agenda without three items is approved, seven to zero with no declines or abstentions. Now, we're going to go one by one. Item 8.05 was pulled only because of an abstention. Do I have a motion to approve item 8.05, the waiver request from Brem's Lane Public Charter Do I have a motion to approve item 8.05? Moved by Commissioner Bondima. Do I have a second? Please, will you second that for me? Second from Commissioner Chinia, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Hassan Bondima, Chinia Kashani, Frank, all opposed. Abstentions. Commissioner Richardson abstains. Motion passes six, zero with one abstention. We pulled item 8.09, extension of three charter school leases. Commissioner McFadden pulled that because he wanted a further explanation. Commissioner McFadden's staff is there. You can lead this one and ask the questions. Commissioner McFadden?
Hi, good evening. I, I know that we don't typically get these, so I kind of wanted that explained to the board and also for the sake of the public why we're receiving this extension right now because I don't think it went before operations either.
Yeah, so typically, we bring in the spring around April our approval for schools to use specific locations. It's unusual for us to have schools in a temporary kind of one-year lease with all of the movement with 21st Century. We had a couple of schools that were in that situation, so it's unusual for us to have to come back to get an approval for that because we don't usually have that short of a lease term. Usually the terms for schools that are using our facilities tie to their charter terms. So we're just, we're in an unusual situation and trying to figure out, does this need board approval? Because you already approved, the, the board already approved the use of those spaces in a prior session. So it's a little bit about figuring out the logistics that caused us to be late in, in bringing it forward.
But generally, these come during the renewal process when they're, when they're applying?
So generally, location, the request for locations come either when you're in the pre-opening year, when you're, you've already approved a school to open brand-new and to, as part of that year will bring, there's a year before they, a year in between your approval and when the board votes. So usually in that year before their term actually officially starts in April is when we'll bring approval for their locations because there's a lot of logistics to figure, to get those set up and settled. So, and then from there, the language in the lease allows for applying for renewal consistent with the actual renewal of their charter agreement or contract. So it's unusual for us to come back to the board for approval of a space the school's already been approved to use.
I understand. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Any other questions of staff on the, the lease renewals? Thank you. With that, do I have a motion to approve item 8.09, extension of the leases? Motion made by Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Bondima, all in favor. Commissioners McFadden, Lou Warm from Hassan, but you, you're, you're up. Commissioner Bondima, Chinia, Kashani, Frank, Richardson. Motion passes seven, zero with no abstentions. Thank you. Next item is the Teach for America contract. Is the staff present who can speak to this?
Chief Grant.
So this was pulled by Commissioner McFadden, the Teach for America contract. So your, let's open the discussion. Do you have questions?
Great. With our blueprint work, is this, I'm sure that this is in alignment with it. I have questions about looking through- looking through. I'm just pulling it back up. It just, it does concern me after listening to the public comment and the money that we are may potentially approve for Teach for America with the recruitment process, there is no in-house recruitment program for teachers that we currently are involved in. We're primarily focusing our teacher recruitment with the partnership with Teach for America?
No, I would not say that's true. So we have a variety of alternative certification partners. Teach for America is one. But even when we combine those partnerships, just about 40% of our new teacher hires this year will be from those combined programs. So Teach for America makes up a piece of this. The Baltimore Teaching Residency and urban teachers who the board approved contracts for back in July make up the other portions of that. So I heard Ms. Yenwen earlier say that alternative certification routes do not replace district infrastructure, and I absolutely agree with that. We want to consider all possible ways to recruit teachers. So if you look at the flip side of that 40% that I talked about, about 60% of our new teachers this year this year come from traditional certification programs. That's up from 52% last year. So actually, we're even this year, we're bringing in a higher percentage of traditionally certified teachers than alternatively certified teachers compared to last year. The the bigger picture here is that across Maryland, and some of you heard me say the same thing a year ago, traditional programs do not provide enough teachers for the need in the state. So the Maryland State Department of Education's most recent staffing report shows that LEAs in Maryland hire 6,000 teachers a year. Our colleges and universities in their education programs prepare 3,000 teachers a year. So that is, that's the challenge that we face. I'll give Commissioner McFadden a specific example of Teach for America's value here, and that's in mathematics. So last year, Teach for America recruited 18 math teachers for us. All other sources brought in 20 teachers. So Teach for America brought in one of every two teachers in math that we hired last year. If we combined alternative certification programs, 80% of our new teacher hires in math last year came through those programs. That's not because we are choosing those candidates over candidates from traditional programs. It's that traditional programs are not currently preparing enough. So if we look at something like elementary, Teach for America does provide some elementary teachers, but a much smaller percentage of our teachers because that's not an area where there is as much need.
And why do we only see the effectiveness data from the 2017-18 cohort for their first for their first year? And I I hear you about the 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 lack of the teachers that are being prepared. I mean, I I get that, but also I'm I also have these questions. With the partnership that Teach for America has with Johns Hopkins, what type of work are we doing with Morgan State University, with Coppin State University in order to recruit teachers from those universities and schools also? I I would be interested in knowing that, but also why do we just see the effectiveness data from 2017-18 from that school year because it was most recent?
Yes, so we, I think for a number of years, have produced a board letter that looks like this, that shows the most recent data. It's actually pretty consistent over the last several years. If you looked back to what you see here, and we could have presented it this way, but a higher percentage of Teach for America first-year teachers are effective and highly effective than our overall group of first-year teachers. That's what you see in this cohort, and that has been, you know, roughly roughly similar in recent years. I will say about Johns Hopkins, so I know that the document we provided talks about the partnership with Johns Hopkins, and actually that's for the teachers, once they come into our district, that they complete additional courses that they need to get to a standard certification through Johns Hopkins. It's not that TFA is specifically recruiting from Johns from from Johns Hopkins.
I understand that. Could they potentially work with those other universities also? Or is the partnership specific to Johns Hopkins, that and that's it?
My understanding right now is that it's a partnership with Johns Hopkins. So if they come into Teach for America's program, that's the master's program that they enroll in.
And, okay, so Teach for America has decided on that partnership and not city schools?
Yes.
Okay.
I think more broadly, I was excited this year in February when we made our first teacher hires much earlier than in any recent year, and those were two graduates of new graduates of Morgan State University who had completed their internships here in city schools. That's the kind of thing that we want to do better when we think about the internal side of this, separate from our partnerships that we have relied on with external partners. Part of part of that broader picture of the 3,000 versus 6,000 also is about our HBCUs in Maryland. So HBCUs in their education programs, in again, the most recent data available from MSDE, graduated about 120 new teachers in a year. We hire 500 to 600 teachers a year just here in city schools. So as we think about all potential sources, we certainly do want to find ways to find even more new teachers from those programs as well. And a really specific detail of what we thought about for the future is, if that's the case, are there other programs at HBCUs and other local universities that are not educator preparation preparation programs where we can recruit people who could come in on a conditional certificate and be and become a teacher even though they didn't originally train to do so?
I appreciate that. And with the retention, you mentioned those math teachers that have come through. Do we know how many of those teachers have been retained? And then I also have a question with with Teach for America, there's a is there a commitment that these teachers have to make? Is there like a year? How long is their commitment to serve in city schools? And then also, are we retaining, what, how, who are we retaining from from after we finish this commitment? Are we retaining those teachers, or what is the percentage of individuals that we retain after they finish their commitment?
Sure. I'm trying to remember the first question that you asked, and I'll sorry, I'll miss it, and we'll have to come back to it. Retention, so
It was about the math teachers, yeah.
Math teachers specifically. I don't know the retention specifically of those math teachers. The data that's here shows that almost 85% of the most recent cohort of Teach for America teachers or the the cohort that could have finished its second year, did finish its second year. That actually is favorably different from our overall teacher base. So a benefit of Teach for America's commitment, which is a two-year commitment, is that a significantly higher percentage of teachers make it through the second year. The other side of that is that Teach for America, from the second year to the third year, has a lower retention rate than some other teachers.
Fundamentally, and thank you for that, Mr. Skinner. Fundamentally, also, in looking at their what is this, the pre-service training, they have this onboarding. It's five weeks throughout the summer. The five-week residency is the summer-based training where they learn these foundational skills, which is aligned to the TAL framework. And is that framework aligned to our blueprint and the work that we're doing in the in in the district?
Yeah, so the teachings are like that.
And I'm sorry, but also just that five-week residency coming into our system, it just doesn't seem like the type of training and work that a pre-service teacher would need to have in order to start in some of our high need and critical areas. So that's just a concern that I have. But also that five, that that TAL framework, is it aligned to our blueprint? Is it aligned to district priorities and initiatives that are specific to our system?
Yeah, the framework is is generally aligned with the instructional framework that we use. And when you look at effectiveness data that we presented here, it's when teachers are evaluated using our instructional framework. So I think that's evidence that the training and support that Teach for America provides, admittedly using a slightly different rubric, actually is helping our teachers perform using the rubric that we use internally. In terms of in terms of the structure of the training and the five weeks during the summer, I acknowledge that this is a different a different pre-service and in-service model than a traditional program. So traditional programs, you have longer time before you enter the class. Traditional programs, you don't have any follow-on support once you're in the class. So there are pros and cons to different approaches to training new teachers. I also would just say that there are other teachers who we hire in the district because of that shortage that I talked about, where they have not come through a traditional program and they don't have the support that is outlined here from Teach for America from an external from an external organization that we've partnered with.
Thank, thank you.
Commissioner Frank?
Mr. Grant Skinner, I know that you're not responsible for the 3,000 deficit in the production of teachers and the need, but so I ask, is there is there a group out there that sees this as a problem? In a previous life, I remember meeting with a bunch of manufacturers, and they were they were unable to hire people in the manufacturing field because people were no longer going into manufacturing. They didn't believe they offered a good good wage and and benefits. And so what role can we play? What role is being played in the state of Maryland in a very structural problem that we have? And is it, does it rise to the level of sort of having a a group of people that understand the problem and look at the problem and come up with a set of recommendations that could benefit us and the other LEAs in the in the system? So for example, I imagine there's all kinds of creative ways to get people into teaching. I don't, I can imagine things have been tried that have failed. But what works? Are there incentives that the legislature can consider? What can we do so that we're not necessarily having to go to these alternative programs, which I view as a necessary thing to do and and not a bad thing? But it is a necessary thing cuz we're just not producing enough teachers. So what what is being done on a statewide level that could potentially address that issue?
Sure, I know the Kerwin Commission is exploring this exact question and has a couple of things in Kerwin, the Kerwin Commission's preliminary report either earlier this year, were number one, saying we need to raise the status of the teaching profession as a state to make it more enticing for more people to consider. They actually call out our teacher's contract that has been in place, and we got to hear one of the impacts of with the model teachers earlier as something worth replicating across the state in order to entice more people to choose teaching careers, seeing that there is an opportunity when you become a teacher to grow and advance over time and earn a good salary when you have proven to be effective, which we, I think I saw recent news in the state of a survey that showed how low teachers in the state are paid. And I saw that and said, we have a good story here in Baltimore that when you come to Baltimore City, you can start with that with the, I think, the second highest salary anywhere in the state. You can get to a salary of 70 or $80,000 within a few years if you are performing effectively and taking advantage of ongoing learning opportunities.
Just, you know, as an example, the city has a first responders program where if you're a first responder and live in the city, you get benefits that increase your wage. And if there there are other things that maybe we could do locally, we should also think about.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that that there are there are different things that we could think about and partnering with other agencies to also get people to choose teaching.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Chief Grant Skinner. So to build off Commissioner Frank's question, would it be possible, say, you said you mentioned now February was an early hire. So maybe in December, January, to see a presentation of just your overall thinking on your staffing plan? Both the short term of this is what we're gonna lean into this year, but also looking at some more long-term possibilities, strategies to flesh out with our stakeholder partners about developing a paraprofessional-to-teacher pipeline, about incentivizing high school seniors or marketing education and educational organizations within our high schools, service learning within high schools to build capacity, interest and desire. And then incentivizing ways we can use either some of this $800,000 or a portion of other monies to to incentivize going to college in Baltimore, teaching in Baltimore City in many of the same benefit ways that we offer to people who went to college somewhere else that we're bringing in. So that would be great to see. Second one, when when you present the retention data, what would also be great to see is not only the year-to-year retention, but how many of those teachers are staying in the classroom as the retention versus being moved to central office, being moved to non-teaching positions where maybe, you know, for for any number of multitudes of reasons. But to see who's staying in the classrooms. So if we really know we're getting our face-to-child dollar-for-dollar value. And then the third piece is just the same question I asked about principals. We're about to start the school year. How many how many teacher vacancies do we have? Where where are we with that?
Sure, I'm gonna start with number two cuz it's just a clarification. So the data here that's presented about retention actually is retention in the teacher role. So if someone left the teacher role, they're not counted in in the retention data as they're presented here.
Perfect, thank you.
The I was smiling because although you have not personally been in attendance at one of our meetings of the Black Teacher Recruitment and Retention Working Group, you talked about two of the four things that this group has decided to work on, and that is helping our paraeducators, almost 90% of whom are black or African-American, pursue teacher roles and helping encourage our students, as young as middle school, think about what it would look like to pursue a career in education. So those are two of the topics that this group is going to focus on. I should say, back to what I meant to say about Kerwin. So one of the other topics this group has decided to explore is certification. And I am going to use all the opportunities I can to say we have a problem that Maryland State requirements for certification include passage of multiple praxis exams. And we have documented evidence from all over the country that that requirement is disproportionately affecting black and African-American teachers and prospective teachers in a negative way. So, and the next meeting is September 18th. So the, sorry, I now got off track. The third thing you mentioned was
No, that was, the the third thing was about sharing your overall staffing vision plan with us so that we can know things like this is happening, so we can celebrate and share that good message. I think it would also be very interesting, again, something Commissioner Frank will be interested in, is looking at the economic impact, the very valuable economic correlation impact of Teach for America and the Remington neighborhood. And how can we leverage housing as an option? You know, reduced cost of housing to bring people who will then live and stay in in the city. Many people will say that Remington happened because of the, you know, deferred rental rates for TFA teachers in that in the I don't know, the Whole Foods area, it's got a name, I just forgot it.
There's a teacher next door. Didn't you, do y'all have it in Bella Edison? There's been a number of
Through HUD.
No, we've done it through healthy neighborhoods. I mean, there's been a number of programs. It's a good idea.
But if if we could look, look and see, how can we, you know, use every dime twice and help with urban development and city renewal and engagement and retention and recruitment and so, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great to hear, great news.
I I also wanted to add, and clearly Chief Grant Skinner has presented comprehensively enough that I don't need to say anything, which was lovely, I just got to sit back.
But she will.
But I will, just because I come from loquacious stock. Is that that I do think is important is that we are, together with the schools office, our ILEDs, really looking at teacher retention as a major indicator. Because when we look at the data and, you know, Chief Grant Skinner and his HC team do a fabulous job with what they have, I will tell you, we have had the conversation with our school leaders that we have our our retention challenge is larger than our recruitment challenge. And so to only focus on on one side of that equation leaves us vulnerable. So I just want to kind of name that, that even though that's not officially in Chief Grant Skinner's shop, because what we are finding is that there are schools within our city our city where there is very little turnover, where teachers stay for long periods of time, where they are supported, where they are happy with the leadership, where they feel like they're growing and developing. We have other schools that repeatedly turnover, large portion of staff, to Commissioner McFadden's point, it also gets into, and this is something we've had conversations with, about the clustering of large numbers of new teachers in our neediest schools. And even in my work nationally, when I was at Ed Trust, it is one of the single indicators across districts across the country. And that is the high concentration of frankly, lower skilled, and I can say that because as a first-year teacher, I shudder when I think of the children that I had that year and how how little they got compared to when I got better. And so one of the things I think is important for the board to also know is from the schools' office perspective, working with Chief Davis, working with the ILEDs, we now have an indicator. And one of the one of the data points that we presented at at the CAO and Chief of Schools end of year, and there was a little ripple through the room as we began showing teacher retention data. And so this is now a new data point, we are focusing on that data point, we're having conversations with school leaders about it because we can't lean on HC to recruit hundreds upon hundreds of teachers every year if we're not keeping the hundreds of teachers we could be because we're not giving them the conditions to teach in. So I just want to in in, you know, in just full kind of forthrightness, say that it really is a two-pronged issue. It's not just recruitment, it's recruitment and retention.
And since Rebecca from Teachers Democracy Project brought it up earlier, both Rebecca and Natasha were in the focus group we held with teachers as part of the enrollment task force. And this this, there are a number of underlying reasons, some of which may be clustering of less experienced teachers, but there are other reasons that we learned about why teachers might leave. And I think so, you know, as we study the data and the input from those working group reports, we should take to heart what what teachers are telling us about sometimes how they're treated. You can't expect people to hang around who have other options. So I that's another source of data, while it's not wasn't statistically significant in terms of who we talked to, but we got an earful from not just teachers, but students and paras and others about customer service might be the wrong word, but if you don't, if we all don't treat each other well, why hang around? Yes, you can. Thank you, Joshua.
So going back to what you said about the Maryland, about they're taking several tests that are disadvantaged to African-Americans, has there, if you know of any any other states or regions that have done, has used the same same things to do to certify a teacher within Maryland, through Maryland, other states that have done the same? And has that still been a disadvantage to African-Americans in other states?
Sure, a couple of things I'll say, so the a specific data point I could share is one of the exams is a praxis core exam specific to math. And if you look at every single person who has ever taken that test in the country, it's a new exam from in the past few years, the passage rate of white test takers is double the passage rate of black test takers. And that demonstrates that there is some inherent bias in that exam. And it is an exam that states all across the country use as one of the components of certification requirements.
Is that because of why I'm not understanding? If if an African-American teacher were to go to college and an Afro, not Caucasian teacher were to go to college and they come back and take the same test, but African-American, is it because of the teaching that they get from the colleges? Or is it because of just, you know, inequity? Like, I don't know, like-
Yeah, I I can't answer that of what all the factors are, but I will say, when I see data like that, it says that there is a problem with that requirement. The second part of your question, I think that some people in the state are talking about a more performance-based task being a part of a requirement for certification. And perhaps that is a step in the right direction away from something that is all about the inputs of what you have before you become a teacher, as opposed to being able to demonstrate that you have the ability to effectively lead a classroom. So hopefully, Maryland is looking at this and that people will advocate for changes here. Because interestingly, the praxis requirement is the one thing that a district in Maryland cannot even ask the Maryland State Department of Education to waive. So there are other certification requirements, we can at least make the ask to the state superintendent to waive a requirement for a teacher. We cannot ask that under Maryland law for praxis.
And so, thank you for that. But also, for the Teacher for America, when you said, going back to what Mr. McFadden said about the partnership with JHU, has there been an open discussion about partnerships with HBCUs within the city of Baltimore? Or has there not been anything said about it? Like, I'm trying to understand, why is it specifically for JHU while Teach for America specifically wants JHU? Or is there an open discussion about it?
I don't know the history of Teach for America's decision-making there. I will say, at a time in the past, there was not as coordinated an effort in terms of sending everyone to a particular school for those courses. And at some point, they felt that it made sense to have something more coordinated with a particular university.
With the praxis, it's not a matter of dumbing down requirements, it's a matter of equity and making sure that we are recruiting the best for for Baltimore and systems like it.
Yes.
Thank you for agreeing.
Well said.
With that, thank you, Commissioner Lynn. With that, I'd like to call for a motion on item 14.01, Teach for America. Motion from Commissioner Hassan, do I have a second? Commissioner Richardson, all in favor? Commissioner Hassan, Chinia, Kashani, Frank, Richardson, all opposed? All abstained. Commissioner McFadden abstains. Motion passes. Five, five, zero with one abstention and one absent. Sorry, I just had to get my math right there. I think everybody, I'm sorry, I've been off. I think everybody, sorry about that. I think everybody knows this, but you should always assume when you make the information discussion presentations that the board has read every word of what was posted on Board Docs. So you can, you don't have to read the slides, you can just hit the high points.
Good evening, my name is Mark E. Tian. I am an ILED and Acting Chief of Schools.
My name is Amanda Ellison, I'm the Director of Student and School Operations Support.
My name's Latasha Moretti, I'm Special Assistant to the Chief Operating Officer.
Thank you for the opportunity to present an update on our readiness to open the 2018 and 19 school year. I will get us started by providing a brief overview and some insight into our process and then hand over to my colleagues to walk through the different areas of readiness and then obviously take questions as they come. First, we began this process a lot earlier than we have in the past, immediately ending the 2017-18 school year. We began to speak with department leads and then started bi-weekly meetings with departments to have conversations about goal-setting, on what readiness would look like. We focused on norms of honesty and ownership and thinking about the complexity of this work. And we monitored those goals very closely by looking at multiple data points throughout the process. And so we began that, as I mentioned, at the end of the school year and have been meeting bi-weekly since, most recently, I believe, as late last week. So I want to take a moment and kind of talk about how that has led to catching some things we may not have caught previously. And so we looked very carefully at both qualitative and quantitative data. And so when we talk about quantitative data, those are the things that we might find on lists and records of how many of something has been addressed at a school, whether it's facilities or HC or any of those areas. But what we really wanted to do differently this year, and Chief Davis really led us through this process, is think about what it looks like for a school to be ready. And so in many different times and points, we had multiple eyes on the ground in schools looking to see whether or not we thought the school was ready. We had input from principals, many members of different departments that we could then flag to the heads of departments and have the dialogue at our stat meetings. And so where previously we might not have had enough information to catch something before school opened, we are now in a place where we have really gone through an exhaustive list from many multiple data points to figure out whether or not we have what we need or we have to take further steps to be ready. And so I wanted to point that out around quantitative and qualitative data, name that many different people have been working very hard on this. It is not perfect, we have made a lot of improvements since last year, and we'd like to get into some of those areas over the next series of slides.
Okay, so we're going to hit on a bunch of areas, I won't read them over. Staffing, we are in a very good place for staffing. As you know, the last couple principal placements were tonight. So we are, hopefully, have every school has a principal as of tonight, which is a really great place to be. We had most of our principal placements completed by 6:30 June 30th, which was our goal. We didn't quite hit all of them, but we were much earlier than we've been in the past, which has allowed school leaders to get into placement and start preparing their buildings at a much earlier time. School staffing has also been moving along much quicker. We are in a better place. As of today, I got the rate from Human Capital just a couple of hours ago, hours ago, we're down to 133 vacancies, which is much better than last year, which was 165. But please also note, they hired over 100 more people due to the turnover this year. So the number was even much higher. So Human Capital has been working really hard. And so this slide really touched upon some of the things that Human Capital did differently. They, as Chief Grant Skinner spoke about, they started much earlier, offering efforts started in February, and they were very, very transparent with principals on the process. We got updates in our Leadership Action updates every two weeks so that everybody knew what was going on throughout the entire process. Human Capital also brought data to our stat meetings that they may not have brought before in much, much more level of detail, down to which exact positions we're looking for, why we're having difficulty hiring that position, talking about suggestions from the team of how can we find, for instance, CTE, we know is a difficult spot to staff. So we were talking about suggestions from the entire group of what are good ways maybe of bringing in nursing folks to help with the CTEs. So we did a lot of new things this year, which were very useful.
This year, facilities operated on a nine-week blitz schedule, which was completed on August the 17th. And it's important to note, well, what that did for facilities is let us free up some time, which is the two weeks prior to school opening, including the week that we're currently in, to go back to any schools that may have still identified major flags or concerns that they had for school opening. We also took the time for during these two weeks to go back to schools who may have not had their work orders completed during their first blitz date because their materials were on hold and so we could not complete those work orders at that time. I want to note that this year, what is different is that our pest control team actually, which is housed in our Health and Safety Office, actually aligned their schedule to our repair blitz schedule as well. And what that means is the pest control teams went into the schools prior to the blitz schedule to also ensure that if any health and safety concerns came up, that those concerns could be abated at the time of the blitz as well. An example of some of those things might have been maybe securing entryways that where rodents are able to gain access to our building. We wanted to ensure that when our blitz teams went into the buildings, that they'll address those critical issues as well. This year, a major change for facilities is that we, for ease of operations and efficiency, moved from a three-region model to a four-region model. And that has been very helpful and successful under the direction of Dr. Lynette Washington. So we're in week 12, as as the slide indicates. This guide is critical and important because what it shows us is that already this summer, that the facilities team has received 7,200 work orders. Only 1,500 of those work orders remain incomplete. And I want to let everybody know that facilities is working very hard to abate those 1,500 work orders that have not been completed. We're working extended days, we're also, most recently, working weekends to ensure that our schools are ready for opening day. Student transportation is working very hard to ensure that all students that are eligible for transportation and that have been approved in SCS receive transportation on day one. This data is as of the 20th of August, but as updated by transportation today, we have about 3,100 students that have act that are actually in SCS and 2,947 that have actually been routed by transportation. What is important to note is that that means in the last eight days, our our team has worked very hard to route an additional 700 students. Our team is still working under the seven limited bell schedules that were from last year, so there isn't a change in that regard. But families did receive their communications as well as their bus information for their students on August the 20th. As we said, this data is ever-changing, students are continuously being routed daily by our team. What that means for transportation is that they must stay in constant communication with our families. We contact them by phone as well as send them an updated letter via mail to ensure that they receive proper notification of their change.
Can you explain the the limited bell schedule as you can briefly?
It it says limited, but in order to explain, it's just that in the past, especially when I first came to city schools, we were operating on a large amount of bell schedules. And what we had to do for efficiency for transportation is try to get the schools within the parameters of only limiting the bell schedules to seven, because it was just almost impossible to route students with a diverse amount of bell schedules that we had currently at that time.
A question on this slide, on this idea. Transportation is always a challenge for us and the hybrid systems that we have. I'm concerned that if we don't begin letting people know until August 20th, what time their bus is, what space their bus is, for our families and especially our families who are economically really fragile and need to find childcare, I'm not sure 15 days is is even realistic to to expect families to be able to find someone to watch a child for an extra hour in the morning or or be there in the afternoon. And are we putting our families at risk? And is there any way to mitigate this?
I think the challenge for transportation is that we try to route as soon as possible for our students, but the data is so changing that that window unfortunately remains as small as it does. We are doing our best, but like I said, to date, we are still having changes to our routes as we continuously try to link student routes together so that we can provide transportation.
Is there any way we could provide parents with a window of, you know, your your school starts at nine, we'll be attempting to have your child collected between 7:30 and 8:30 or something along those lines to support?
And so I think that a lot of it is when we are, we get the information in and we have to go through a vetting process and then we're routing students. We have been attempting to work even earlier this time around, once we got the information and vetted it. But again, it's also about, there was a change in our bus contract, and so it's how many vendors are available for buses that are available and routing. And so I think that this time next year, it probably, we probably can move earlier because we don't have a change in the contract. So we already know how many buses will be available, but this time around, there was a change in the contract. So so again, I appreciate how challenging this is. I've just gotten reach out from two different families that have been told that they will receive their information by August 31st, and they're having really no idea how to even mindfully plan. So if we if we could think about ways to support families and and again, understand it's a really, really heavy lift. But that seems like a customer service thing we should be attending to.
Thank you.
I have a question. So, sorry, right here. So is so is the seven limited bell schedules, is that new for this year? Okay, so it has been going on previous years, correct? So I'm just thinking back to the woman here earlier that has a child and said that she was waiting for the bus for like 30 minutes or something. Can is, so has there been any issues regarding lateness of buses or too earliness of buses that you guys have been able to kind of compact it? guys have been able to kind of compact it better? Because I mean, the seven limited bell schedule seems a little much to me, too. But I mean, so is there any way that we can either crunch it or get it better? Because you said you already have the contract of how many school buses you'll have and everything. So, I'm just wondering, is there going to be efficiency more this year? Or?
And I think that the bell schedules always, there is a review so that we can improve efficiencies, right? So, we are routing, and a number of our students are special needs students, so this is not corner to corner, these are curb to curb, and that's why we're always looking at bell schedules. The other thing is that we're also pushing better performance with our contractors, too. And that's where our targets are. If contractors are showing up late, how are we responding to them to make sure that they perform better? And that's one of the targets that we're having. The bell schedules, again, we'll do reviews of that for our better efficiencies, but it's performance of our contractors.
If I might, I just want to, you know, make certain that we're aware. I can remember when the bell schedules were many more than seven. And just this evening, we talked about, you know, given weather conditions, the possibility sometime of early closing. The more bell schedules we have, the more difficult that is even for parents to figure out, you know, what's the three-hour early dismissal kind of thing. So, to the extent that we can keep it within a limited range, and I think we may be interpreting limited a little differently than it's meant here, really, that does help with the efficiencies that we're looking for.
Okay, so, we're going to move on to scheduling. As you know, it's super important for every student to have a schedule on the first day, so we are working with schools closely. The numbers continue to shift. As of this morning, there was only one school left in red, and it wasn't even in red last week. They had had a last-minute change, so they'll be out of red by tomorrow. So, we expect all schools will be scheduled. We've also encouraged schools to have what we call sort of a blank schedule ready to go, so no matter what age, what level student arrives, they have a classroom to go to on the first day, because we don't want anyone sitting and missing education on the first day of school. We have been watching this real closely all year. We did some new things, which was scheduling really worked at the pre-budget session, because we noticed sometimes, if you started working with schools, especially our secondary schools, to start talking about this when they're budgeting. Aligned with scheduling, we also have to have our students enrolled, and so we did have our summer transfer process. We had it into locations at the Wahlberg Building and the District Office. That was a new setup for us, but it seemed to work very well. And our last day of transfer for, the choice transfer was on August 17th. It does not mean if you are a new student of Baltimore City, you cannot come and enroll with us today. It does not mean that if you moved, you can't transfer. Of course you can. So, there are lots of exceptions. So, if you ever have a question, we encourage families to call the enrollment office. But this is just to help schools settle in and be able to have schedules and be able to have things ready for the first day, so that they know what their attendance or what their enrollment will be. We also were participating in the block parties. You've heard the mayor's block parties, so the enrollment office was out with all of those areas. And we're preparing for all of the SEL work. We have a lot of great work coming on with the blueprints, so that's what the Student Homeless Office has been focusing on this summer. Procurement, you also talked earlier about the Witten Wisdom curriculum. That is our big curriculum procurement items this summer. But we've done a couple of other things. For one, all of our contracts were in place by July 1st, which was great, because it allowed schools to start ordering as soon as the funding opened. We also were working very closely with schools with cleaning contracts, to get those cleaning contracts in earlier. We know a lot of those contracts start during the school year, but we wanted to have them in place as early as possible in case they ran into any problems. So, those were all things we focused on this summer.
Food Services has worked hard this year to ensure that all schools and cafeterias are fully staffed, as well as to ensure that their equipment was inspected, so that they're ready to receive students and serve students on the first day of school. I've just been told that some of our schools, on our back-to-school night, will be offering food tastings, so we encourage our families to get out and try the food that will be served to the students this year. I'm being told that we're offering Korean barbecue at our food tasting, so please come out and enjoy. Also, it's important to note, of course, that all our meals for city school students Sorry, didn't realize I was up again. In order to continue with the priority of city schools to modernize our buildings, as well as provide our students with the best learning spaces available, we are proud to announce with the 21st Buildings Program that we opened five beautiful buildings. They were Pemblico, Forest Park, Cherry Hill, Arundel, and of course, Ace and Independence are housed into the Robert Poole Building. It's also important to note that our swing space moves were also successful and completed, and that the 21st Century team did an excellent job at working with the transportation team to ensure that those students that were affected by swing space moves received yellow bus
Related to communications, we, every summer, revise our family guides and our back-to-school code of conduct documents to make sure everyone gets the most up-to-date information, so that was done again. We did work on getting that item, those items delivered to schools a little earlier, based on feedback we heard from principals, that some of the items were coming as late as the day before, the weekend before school. They didn't have time to even separate it and to prepare it. So, we worked really hard to get that done earlier. We also have all of the general back-to-school messaging, but in addition, we have a Radio One partnership, which is new this year. I can't give you every little detail about it, but I do know that it's very exciting. There's a lot of in-depth programming that's coming, but they've already started some public service announcements for our pre-K and kindergarten, and also with our re-engagement. So, I encourage you to listen to that with Radio One. And last but not least, you mentioned earlier how great our school police were, and so our school police are amazing, and they'll be working on student safety, along with the Police Department and MTA Police for the first couple of weeks of school. Of course, school police will be doing it for all year. But if you do have any concerns, we do have a tip line, and it can be made anonymously, and the tip line is on our site, on the website, excuse me, on the website and also on this slide. And that is it. Are there any additional comments or questions? Mr. Frank?
Yeah, last time, at an operations committee, I remember, there was a presentation on the number of people that we had in facilities that were available to complete work orders compared to other jurisdictions, and it was a fraction of what other jurisdictions had. I think it's useful to include something like that in this presentation, because although we're celebrating the fact that we're going to close 5,700 work orders, I can't imagine how we're doing it with the resources that we have relative to the resources of other districts. And the same is true with the other things that we're doing to get ready for schools. We kind of give the impression we're ready, but the other hand, we should also know what we can't do without the resources that we need, and I think that's as important to present as the information that you're presenting.
Thank you.
To close, I'd like to take a moment and publicly thank our principals and their leadership teams for the tireless work that they've engaged in throughout the summer, not only in making sure that the building is exciting and warm and ready for students, but the leadership and the work they're putting in to prepare our new curriculum, Witten Wisdom, to be ready to go on day one. And I'd like to thank Dr. Washington and her team, to your point, Commissioner, on the limited resources they have. They have been very open, very flexible, and have partnered with us as ILDs to flag the priorities that we need to be ready. And to be clear, we are close, we are almost there, but we still have work to do. And what's been making the biggest difference is the ability for the principals, the AFMs, the lead techs, the ILDs, to communicate regularly and seamlessly, so that we can get to the schools that need the most help in time for school to open. So, publicly thanking all of those that are doing this work, and we'll continue to do this work until we open school for all the children that deserve a great experience on day one. Thank you, everyone.
Other comments, questions?
I just want to thank you all. You, and again, in Chief Davis's absence, one of the things that occurred this year was we took a lot of the process that Latasha and Amanda had been working on, and we had a wonderful foundation, and really ramped it up to the next level. And I think Commissioner Frank's real suggestion is a powerful one, and it is the double-edged sword of being in a school district like Baltimore City, that when we can close close to 7,000 work orders, open five brand-new school buildings, shift students into transition space with woefully short resources. We're caught between a rock and a hard place. We have to do the right thing for kids. I'm looking at Blaine and John, and they have taken some of my bluster and my direct, but they work. They work overtime. Chief Washington, or interim Chief Washington, you know, I called her the other day, and she's on the playground with her kids in the background, and she's taking calls. And Mr. ATN is, you know, coming back from his son's football game. And that's the thing that people don't see, is what our team does, because they care about the young people of Baltimore City, and they don't complain, even to me, about just how understaffed they are. The legacy, again, and I'm going to continue to say it, because now that I'm 51, yes, as of August 3rd, one of the things I love about being in my 50s is I will speak truth. And the truth is, you cannot have decades of systemic and deliberate underfunding of particular schools, ask people to rub things together with two nickels, and then slam them when something goes wrong. And what we have is a team of people who have decided that they, at really the expense of their own children and their own families, the number of them who have spouses who have said to them, "We know that you have to do this, we know we will not see you," is the piece that the public does not see. And no, we are not perfect, and yes, we have further to go, but I stand by the work of my team. I stand by their improvements, their push from me, at their own personal sacrifice. And so, I want to thank you all publicly. Mark, you did it in a lovely diplomatic way, but again, I'm 51, and I can say it. When I have phone calls and people are missing bedtime, because they're going to make sure moldy tiles are gone for first day of school, no media camera is around when that happens, but I want them to know, I'm around, I know you do it, and I say thank you to both you and your loved ones, who all sacrificed in order for our buildings to be ready on the first day of school. Thank you.
Welcome to your 50s.
Yeah, I love it.
Now, you're old enough to know better.
Old enough to know better.
Yes.
I know, I'm thinking the same thing. So, here we go. Next up, policy J I C K. Bullying, harassment, or intimidation of students. First reader. Okay, well, I'm glad to see you all again. My name is Amanda Ellison. I'm still the Director of Student and School Operations Support.
Good afternoon. Eric Banzak, Coordinator of Restorative Practice, under the whole child office.
Okay, we're going to try to make this presentation very quick, because I know everyone's been here a while. We have a bullying policy. I don't want anyone to question that. We have one today. It's in place. It is currently being implemented, but we needed to make some updates. There was a few things we've gotten concerns over the years. We know there was some best practices that we've learned over the years, and so we wanted to make some updates to our policy and regulation. So, we did have some work groups. We got a lot of feedback. We reviewed that feedback. One of the things that we wanted to note is that our feedback, sometimes people share feedback, it doesn't necessarily go into a policy or regulation. Sometimes it's going to go into our training, our guidance documents. So, we do take all of the feedback. We do consider all of it. But when Eric and I are developing trainings, and when we're looking at what are the best practices, and how are we going to communicate with folks, some of the feedback that may not go into a policy will still be incorporated in other areas. The big thing that we changed in the policy itself was really just definitions. The definitions before, if you remember, were rather vague. They put bullying, intimidation, and harassment all in basically one definition, and those are not the same thing. It had a small subsection for cyberbullying, but it sort of assumed, once you said it was electronic, you knew everything else about cyberbullying. So, we provided a lot of examples. So, in bullying, we use terminology that people might say. When a student or a parent says, "So-and-so was teasing me," or, you know, I'm trying to think of some of the cyberbullying, like, "I was happy slapped." You need to understand some of the terminology that's coming around to know that those are bullying. So, we put those examples in the policy. We described a lot of things in more detail. We added instigators into the definitions, because we've heard from schools that they weren't sure what they could do. Can they be, if someone just started the bullying but didn't actually do it themselves, could they be still have an outcome from that? And so, we made sure that that was very clear. The policy also previously just said, "We don't accept bullying," which is absolutely true, but it didn't sort of say what else we wanted instead. So, we put some positive behavior expectations. We put a little bit more about reporting, prevention, and interventions. You did hear earlier some feedback. We have received the feedback from the Teacher Democracy Project. It did not get into this round of presentation, but it will be incorporated into our second reader. But one of the things that they did address was that we have a lot of information on reporting and investigation, but not necessarily a lot on the resources, so we're going to see what we can do to add into that. But I just wanted you to know, we have taken that feedback, and we are looking into that. In terms of the regulation, we had some information. There wasn't really any information about prevention previously, so we have added information about prevention, because we all know the best way to deal with bullying is to not have bullying. That would be the ideal world, or to figure out a way to prevent it. We currently already have schools identifying a bullying liaison, but we didn't really have a description for that role, so in our policy, we've added that information. We also have been looking, as we moved into policies related to discipline. We know we've moved towards being a restorative district, so we wanted to make sure all of that information was added. We got a lot of feedback also from groups that told us that students who are coming and not speaking English did not feel as comfortable reporting bullying, and some of the processes were not as clear. So, that language was added specifically in to address some of those areas, based on feedback we also got from outside groups. And as I said, we're continuing to accept feedback. This is only the first reader, so we are happy to accept feedback. When we were at the Policy Committee, one of the requests was to reach out to health teachers, which we did do before the end of the year, to try to give them some time to provide feedback. So, we have gotten feedback from a wide range of sources, and as I noted on here, the Teacher Democracy Project feedback is not incorporated in this version, but it will be in the second reader. And that's it from us. Any questions? Questions, comments? Terrific. Fisher Lynn?
So, I was on the board for ASCBC when we did go over this. One of the things that we talked about was that we had an electronic version of reporting bullying, and it could be anonymous. I was wondering, I didn't ask this before, but is the online version, is it able to be transferred into Spanish, so that way Spanish speakers would be able to understand it and properly?
Yes, there's, actually, there's a Spanish version online right now. As we currently speak, there's a Spanish version, but it can be translated in any language. We would use our, I think it's Language Link. We would use that service that we have that would be able to translate it for any language that we would need.
I also wanted to know if it's easily accessible on the website. I know that the website is going to be revamped, but is it still, you know?
I'm not going to say it's 100% easy access, but it's easier than other LEAs to find on the website. You know, I will say that, but my goal is, is when we do revamp it, I would like to have maybe on the front page, just a direct link right to it that you would have as easy as possible when you go to it.
And, I'm sorry, my last question is that, I know that bullying is definitely on the code of conduct. It has a little section for it. Is there any way that either it could be implemented, or it could be said, the hotline, as well as the website, or even the direct link to the?
The link is added into the code of conduct. We definitely put the link in, yes.
And that was based on feedback from ASCBC. Commissioner Hassan?
I just wanted to say thank you. This is not, it's, as Dr. said, this is not always the sexy work, and it's not always the fun work, but watching iterations come through from policy, to taking our feedback there, to here, to the community engagement, I just want to shout out to the offices and the staff that are working on the policies and making sure the community's updated along the way. So, appreciate the So appreciate the process.
Awesome. Thanks. Next up, policy G B N. Appointment, assignment, transfer, probation, election to tenure, resignations, and retirement of employees. First reader. Just a light subject late in the evening.
Good evening, Chair Kasani, on the board members, Dr. Santalisis. We're here to talk about G B N, which is appointments, and G C C, which is absences and leaves of absence. In the case of both of these policies, they are conversions of old board rules to the policy and regs. With the G C C, which is leaves, we have updated it because the board policy predates F M L A. It also predates the Uniform Services Employment and Reemployment Act, so we incorporated that into the policy. We sent it to the unions for feedback. We presented at P C A P back in May. That was the old P C A P. We might want to take a look at going back to the new committee and running it by them, so they can have, we can get that feedback. Also, we use a charter advisory committee. So again, we're going to cover appointments and absences. In the case of both policies, we looked at some surrounding LEAs. For appointment, all of the LEAs had that policy. Only half of them actually had a policy and regulation for absences and leaves of absence. This slide delineates what the old board rules were that we converted to the policy under appointment. You can see there's a lot of them. It was appointment, T V, task, assignment, probationary periods, resignations, and promotions. In general, for appointment, we just generalized the requirements to as defined by law. In a lot of places, we spelled out things, but as the laws change, it made the policies outdated, so we converted a lot of terms to as defined by law. We specified specifically that interim appointments are for fiscal year only. However, the board has the authority to extend those assignments into the next fiscal year if it so chooses. We delegated that the non-certificated appointment of authority is within the CEO. That is specifically outlined in Comar, specific to Baltimore City and the CEO in Baltimore City. There's some other things. We approve sabbaticals. We added sabbatical, which could be approved by the board for unaffiliated individuals, outlined when certificated employees must notify of resignation. Then converted some other personnel to, education personnel to just personnel.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
So that's, I think it's great, because knowing earlier allows us to make, to do effective personnel planning. What happens if they don't? Like, if I miss the deadline and I decide, like, is there some retribution? Like, it's hard to understand, like, what happens if you don't do?
So what happens if, if a teacher does not, if you're non-tenured by May 1st, if you're tenured by July 15th? If they attempt to go to another Maryland district, the other Maryland district would ask them for a letter of resignation without prejudice. Of course, we would not give that to them.
There you go.
And so we don't hire from each other if people have violated their contracts. Because we all, we all share that pain, and so we don't hire.
That's the non-educator just not understanding how that worked, and I just couldn't tell if something happened to you if you missed that and?
Yeah, and it's specifically spelled out in the contract that you signed.
Great.
For absence, we broke down in the policy what's delegated to the board, what's delegated to the CEO, and what the Office of Human Capital would do as far as approval of leaves, denial of leaves, maintaining the records. And when compared to the original board policy rules, rather, we added the Family Medical Leave Act provisions and incorporated Uniform Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act in policy. And we also added annual advisory on attendance requirements for all personnel. And that's it.
So, just a comment, and I was a number of years ago when Commissioner Cooper kind of reinvigorated the board committees. It's just really nice, and I appreciate the leadership of Commissioner Hassan. It's just really nice to see us work through this backlog of outdated policies. I mean, systematically, I think we're, we're getting through them, and this is an example of one that needed to be refreshed, so I appreciate that.
We'll be back. We got?
Oh, I don't, I, we're not done, but without a policy committee, it was a little rough getting to any of it, so it's good work. Questions, comments? So I assume that this was, this presentation was combined, so there, is there a separate presentation for the item 18.04, policy G C C?
Oh, it was combined in.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. It was just listed separately. Okay. So with no other questions, it's actually pretty clear and very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, item 18.05, school specialty, school furniture donation. It's been a feel-good board meeting. Why not finish with a feel-good item?
Good evening. My name's Nicole Price, Director of Community and Public Relations for the 21st Century Buildings Program. This presentation is primarily about just being transparent, given the size of the donation to Cherry Hill Elementary Middle School. So as you all know, and for those who joined us at the opening of Cherry Hill last week, you noticed that there was some, probably noticed there was some furniture missing. The vendor, school specialty, was unable to fulfill the furniture requirement for Cherry Hill by the start of school. And so in place of the furniture, the permanent furniture, they are donating tables and chairs to the school until their permanent furniture can be delivered. We expect that will be delivered sometime in October. It is just simple tables and chairs, nothing fancy. The principal was made aware. She had an option of going with the images that you see there for the folding tables and chairs, or furniture, or permanent furniture for the start of school that did not match the color scheme. She opted for accepting the donation of 288 folding chairs and 48 tables. She will be able to keep those once the permanent furniture is delivered. And so families know that they are getting something much nicer than what's in there when they come to school on September the 4th. There are images of the furniture that will be delivered in October, so that they know that they're expecting something nicer. Given the amount of this, we just wanted to make, be completely transparent about the donation coming from school specialty to Cherry Hill Elementary Middle School.
Questions, comments? Commissioner McFadden?
Just thank you for all the work. And Mr. Gant, make sure that we had sizes for those 21st Century shirts. And Madam CEO, I just want to, as a board member, I know that you've done it, and you, you mentioned the work of the 21st Century staff, but specifically Ms. Price. What I noticed about her every time at these ribbon cuttings that you were about to introduce her and announce her, she would slip off into the back. And this is one thing that I think is important.
Can I step on that?
That, just like you said earlier, that we, we have to do better with highlighting the work of the folks that are putting in these extreme hours with, with, you know, the, the, the lack of money that we're receiving on so many different levels, and we're constantly in reorganization and redistributing things to make things work when we should have these things. And so a person like Nicole Price, I just want to give you kudos, shout you out for the incredible work that you're doing. She even, she took me, and I just want to shout you out again. She took me on a personal tour of Cherry Hill. You got one too, Commissioner Frank? And I mean?
He got a personal tour of Ace.
Sorry.
But I invite all of you to a personal tour. No bias here.
But I mean, thank you for the work that you're doing, because it is tedious work. It's real work, so thank you. And it's just great to know that we're about to have all of these great schools for our young people to be in, so thank you.
Commissioner Bondima?
Yeah, I just want to say, Ms. Price, we, I've never had the opportunity to have a conversation with you, because every single time that I've gone to anything that you've been involved with, you are a busy bee. And I'm so impressed, and I haven't had the opportunity to tell you that, but what I was even more impressed with at Forest Park, it was a lot of people at Forest Park, people from all age groups everywhere.
Including my mother, who graduated Forest Park.
And?
Oh, that's fun.
Right. And I have friends that graduated from Forest Park way back when, and it was people of all ages, wheelchairs and everything. And we had situations that came up that was normal situations, and you moved, you know, people come in and didn't know they were coming, and you moved through that situation like, and nobody realized that it was any kind of situation. And people were just fine. And I just want to commend you to, for, you know, all the hard work that you do, because you could tell that you are a hard worker, and I was very impressed. And I'm just taking this opportunity to tell you, because I don't think I'll get a chance, because you moved two faves for me in high heels.
Mr. Frank?
Since this is a feel-good meeting, I'm sorry, this is not about you, Nicole, but it should be. But my father was in a nursing home, which is in northwest Baltimore, and most of the residents actually graduated from Forest Park, because many of them grew up in northwest Baltimore and went there. And they had a special, I told, I told Dr. Santalisis, they had a special day, and it was a great turnout, and you don't see great turnouts. And it was because the principal of the school had decided to send the cheerleading squad, the current cheerleading squad of Forest Park, to Leventown to do their cheers and perform for the residents there. And it's not anything that they had to do, and I can tell you how much my father enjoyed it, and his friends, and the other people there. It was just a great gesture by the school district, and I think it represents this kind of feeling that is coming out of the schools right now, that kind of gesture to a community right now that really can't do much for the schools, but they just wanted to reach out to a long population. I thought it was terrific.
Need to add one more thing. One more thing, Nicole.
Go for it.
I did not know my cousin was there, and she graduated from Forest Park in the 50s. She went to school, she sang on the choir at Forest Park. And some of you, I'm aging myself right now. I don't know if you remember the Mamas and the Papas. Well, Mama Cast sang on the choir with my cousins at Forest Park High School, and she came on purpose so that she could be there.
Mama Cast came to Forest Park High School?
Mama Cast graduated from Forest Park High School. Yes.
I didn't know that.
We all know, now, because Cheryl alerted them.
Yes, she did. Barry Levinson. Barry Levinson, the famous producer, graduated from Forest Park High School.
We've learned a lot about Forest Park since that ribbon cutting. And there were several people that stopped by the time capsule that was found. There was a school ring from 1953 or 56. There was a gentleman there that wrote a letter to the future classes of Forest Park. Jesse Bennett was there. So we've learned a lot about Forest Park. I want to thank you all for the accolades and credit, but I would be remiss if I did not mention Kelly Conley, Karen Somerville, Alicia Thomas, and Ivy McNeil, as well as the youth work students that we had. There's no way we could have pulled off five ribbon cuttings in three days without all the work that they did. I would just say that they made me look good because they did all the work. We do have fashionable 21st Century T-shirts for all board members. We're just waiting for your sizes, and so as soon as we get the sizes, we'll have your very fashionable, high-level, next-level 21st Century T-shirts.
So with that, upcoming meetings, teaching and learning will be here on September 4th, 3:30. The next time, we will all be together, executive session upstairs at 3:00, public board meeting at 5:00 on September 11th. Operations Committee will be in this room on September 18th at 10:00. Policy Committee will be in this room September 18th at 3:30. P C A P's next board meeting is September 27th at 6:30. And with that, anything else for the good of the whole?
A motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? We are officially adjourned. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll check you later.
Okay, take care.